Are you here? We are gathered together for a special area study workshop. It is a workshop tonight, Hickory Sink Strategic Ecosystem Lee Property. And we are going to set aside time for our staff presentation and for the applicant presentation and then public comment following that. And we, yes.
I move we accept the agenda, sorry.
All right, that's okay. That's all right. No, go ahead. We're ready to start. All right, motion and second to accept the agenda. And Mr. Sexton, if you would like to talk about, what I was going to talk about was the phone call in for anyone who wants to call in. So maybe if you could give the directions now, that would be great.
Okay, absolutely. Josh, if you could put up on channel 12 the slate with the call in information. We will be taking, outside the norm, we will be taking public comment when the public comment period opens. The phone number is on the agenda. It's on Facebook and it's on the screen. You call in, you dial the, you enter the code that is right there next to the phone number. And then if you want to speak at the public comment, you do star nine when the time comes. And once you hear the last four numbers of your phone number, you will hit star six when I say you're in the room and then you'll be able to give your public comment. Because of the number of folks we have tonight, the public comment will be held to precisely three minutes. So we ask people to be mindful of that. And then it's your choice, you can also use this system simply to listen to the meeting. So you're welcome to come in early and stay late, but when the time comes for public comment, hit star nine to raise your hand.
Thank you, Mr. Sexton. And just to be, just to let listeners know who might be using that, we're talking about about an hour presentation for both. So you can listen, but you, if you're sitting and waiting to speak, you may, you know, may be disappointed if we don't call you right away. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Sexton. All right then. Mr. Chumley? It's your show.
Just a minute.
Did we vote? We didn't vote. Thank you. All in favor of accepting the agenda as presented, say aye.
Aye.
I'd like to sign opposed. All right, now, Mr. Chumley. Thank you.
Thank you. Ben Chumley with the Department of Growth Management. As you mentioned, this is a stakeholder workshop for the special area study for the FCL Timberland and Cattle Property. This property is also known as the Lee Property or the Hickory Sink Strategic Ecosystem, so you may hear us refer to it interchangeably with any of those three names. Staff does have a presentation this evening. I will walk you through the first part of that presentation about the special area planning process and some of the general growth management considerations. And then Stephen Hofstadter with Environmental Protection will walk you through the strategic ecosystem part of the presentation. The primary purpose of this meeting is to provide an opportunity for the board to hear from the public. We have suggested a format for the meeting that I'll show you in just a minute on the next slide. And in terms of process, I do want to note, so everybody knows that there is no final decision expected at tonight's meeting. There is a follow-up Board of County Commissioners meeting scheduled on October 11th at 5:00 PM. And at that meeting, the board may consider whether to accept the special area study. In terms of the general format for this meeting, this is what staff is suggesting. Roughly the first hour would be for staff presentation and questions if there are time. The second hour would be for the applicant presentation and questions. And then we would have a hard start time at seven for public comment. And if there are any, if there's any time left after that, there could be additional commissioner questions and discussions after the public comment. I want to talk for just a minute about the special area planning process and why it is necessary in some cases. Special area planning is a multi-step planning process used to analyze a certain area of the county in detail and then to develop an appropriate plan for that area based on data and analysis in the study. It's intended to be a collaborative process involving the county, the landowner, and the public. The county's comprehensive plan requires that a special area planning process be completed prior to any land use change, zoning change, or development plan on land containing strategic ecosystems as designated in the comprehensive plan or for new rural residential subdivisions of more than 100 lots. And it's worth noting, we're not talking about a subdivision tonight. We are talking about the Hickory Sink Strategic Ecosystem. So the special area planning process is obtained in chapter 402, Article 16 of the Unified Land Development Code. It is a three-step process and we are currently at step two, which is the special area study. The special area study provides the data and analysis and recommendations that form the basis for what will happen in the next step, which is the special area plan. The study serves primarily to evaluate and delineate the strategic ecosystem areas that are required to be protected in accordance with the comprehensive plan. Areas that are found to not contain strategic ecosystem resources may then be eligible for potential development as part of the special area plan stage of the process. The special area study is essentially an interim step on the way to the special area plan part of the process. So if the special area study is accepted by the board, then the applicant may submit follow-up applications for comprehensive plan amendments or zoning changes. And those would further define the land use program for the non-strategic ecosystem portions of the property. The decision that the board is considering at the October 11th meeting is whether to accept the special area study. In accepting the study, the board would be accepting the delineation of the strategic ecosystem set aside areas for permanent protection. And then areas that are not delineated for protection may be eligible for some potential development. Specific development types, densities, and capital improvements would be proposed and considered as part of the special area plan. The study does not necessarily lock the board into any specific development program for the property, but it can set some parameters or conditions that will help guide the preparation of the special area plan. And ultimately, if the special area study is accepted, then, as I said, the applicant will likely come forward in the next step with comprehensive plan amendments and zoning changes for the property. So with that kind of background framing the process, I'm going to move on to an overview of the study itself and some of the staff recommendations. The special area study property itself is about 4,068 acres. The future land use designation per the county's comprehensive plan is rural agriculture. The property sits just outside of the urban cluster line, which is mapped on the future land use map. And the property contains much of the Hickory Sink Strategic Ecosystem as designated generally, generally mapped in the county's comprehensive plan. The special area study documents that have been submitted by the applicant, I just wanted to list those here. There are two primary documents. The first is the original special area study report dated April 11th, which contained several pieces of information and exhibits that are listed here. And then there was a follow-up supplement to the special area study, which was dated July 5th of this year. And all of these documents together make up the special area study that was submitted by the applicant. The Land Development Code contains specific requirements for the content of the special area study. Those are listed here. A stakeholder workshop. The applicant has held two stakeholder workshops, I believe. One of them was in person and one of them was virtual. And of course, tonight's meeting is also a stakeholder workshop. The study needs to contain information about ground truthing of the site for the natural resources assessment and the delineation of the strategic ecosystem resource areas. The study needs to contain an analysis of existing land use and potential future land use scenarios, meaning that those scenarios need to generally delineate agriculture, silviculture, conservation, and development areas. The study needs to contain analysis of public infrastructure and services. And it needs to contain recommendations and strategies for follow-up action as part of a special area plan in the next step of the process. And finally, a presentation to the Board of County Commissioners. The study itself identifies three potential land use scenarios. There's the no build, the by right, and the master planning. The master planning, I think, is also referred to as the collaborative planning scenario. And I'll go through each of those in just a minute. The no build and the by right scenarios are scenarios that would be allowable under the county's adopted comprehensive plan and zoning. The master planning scenario would require significant amendments to the county's adopted comprehensive plan to allow for urban development outside of the county's urban cluster. So this is a map of the no build scenario from the study. We added the red outline on the map just so you could see it better. According to the study, the no build scenario would retain the entire property in its existing condition with active farming, including industrial-scale silviculture and cattle grazing. And as I mentioned, this scenario is generally allowable under the adopted comprehensive plan, rural agriculture, future land use designation, and agriculture zoning. This is a map of the, what's being called the by right scenario. This scenario probably represents something close to what would be the maximum development potential for the site under the current rural agriculture designation. This scenario suggests that the property would be developed for rural residential use at a base density of one unit per five acres. A development in this area would be required to be designed as a clustered rural residential subdivision, which means that a minimum of 50% of the property would need to be set aside as open space and the residential units would be clustered on the remainder. Also worth noting on this scenario, the westernmost portions of the property have been identified as a solar facility. And solar is a land use that would be allowed by right in the rural ag area of the county. However, they could not derive residential density from those areas that are being used for, for the solar facility. The third and final land use scenario that was identified in the study is the master planning scenario. This scenario envisioned several clusters of mixed-use urban-type development on the portions of the property that are not set aside as conservation open space. The study doesn't necessarily indicate how many residential units or how much non-residential area would be proposed. It does describe the potential development types for these areas as being similar to nearby development inside the urban cluster. There is an area in the southeast portion of the site identified as the UF Gift Area. The study indicates that that area is intended for a golf course. And again, as in the last scenario, the westernmost portions of the property are identified for a solar facility. This scenario would not be permitted under the adopted comprehensive plan. As you, as you know, this would require significant amendments to the comprehensive plan to make a scenario like this happen. I want to just talk a little bit about the comprehensive plan's policy framework for land use. When we, when we reviewed the potential land use scenarios, we did so in relation to the county's adopted policies in the comprehensive plan. One of the key policies is the urban cluster, which sets the boundary for urban development in the unincorporated areas of the county. The comprehensive plan anticipates that the majority of the population growth in the unincorporated area should be directed within the urban cluster area. And then within the urban cluster, the comprehensive plan generally calls for higher density and intensity development types, residential, commercial, industrial, mixed-use development. And the comprehensive plan also calls for the provision of urban levels of service to, to serve an urban pattern of development within the urban cluster. Areas outside the urban cluster, which are most of the green areas on this map, are considered rural areas under the comprehensive plan. Those areas are designated primarily for agricultural uses, rural residential and preservation land uses. And urban levels of service are generally not planned for the rural areas under the county's existing comprehensive plan. Some of the benefits of the urban cluster land use policy. It helps contain urban sprawl by ensuring that urban expansion is phased and planned based on reasonable projections of future population growth. It helps to protect the county's agricultural lands and large-scale natural resource conservation areas from encroachment by urban development. It allows for the provision of public infrastructure and services in an efficient and fiscally responsible manner. And the urban cluster also complements the county's goals for interconnected multimodal transportation systems. So the policies in the comprehensive plan go into some detail about the methodology that we are to use for evaluating the urban cluster's capacity to accommodate projected population growth for the 10- and 20-year planning periods. And that evaluation is done periodically as part of the, the required update of the plan every around a seven-to-10-year cycle. We did that last in 2018, 2019. If the evaluation shows that there is a need for additional land to accommodate more population growth in the urban cluster, then the county needs to consider specific measures, including increases to residential density within the urban cluster, working with municipalities to allocate additional growth within city limits, and then finally phased expansion of the urban cluster. Policy 7.1.3 goes on to talk about if the methodology determines that expansion of the urban cluster is warranted, then there needs to be a second level of evaluation of appropriate locations based on certain factors. And those are listed here. In addition to looking at the factors that are listed here, any proposed amendment to expand the urban cluster must include a commitment to transfer development rights from areas located outside the urban cluster into the urban cluster expansion area. There are also related policies in the potable water and sanitary sewer element. And those require that extensions of potable water and sanitary sewer lines outside of the urban cluster are subject to approval by the Board of County Commissioners based on at least one of several possible findings. Those findings are listed here. Things like, you know, the absence of those facilities would result in a threat to public health or safety, or the extension is necessary to enhance safe, effective, and efficient delivery of water and sewer within the existing urban cluster. There are other factors such as serving a purpose consistent with the comprehensive plan, or that the extension is needed as part of a comprehensive expansion of public services to encourage urban development within a new area as part of a comprehensive plan amendment. And in those cases, the finding must be consistent with policy 3.1.6, which, that's also relevant, because it says that if potable water and sanitary sewer systems are extended into new areas as part of a planned expansion of urban services, then there also needs to be consideration of other public services and facilities that are needed, things such as transportation facilities, fire, schools, and other services. Such extensions would require identification, scheduling, and funding for capital improvements to be incorporated into the county's capital improvements program, and would also require adoption of necessary amendments to extend the urban cluster boundary. So the reason for reviewing those policies is that for the master planning scenario, the study is suggesting the possibility for urban types of development on some portions of the property, but it does not necessarily suggest that the urban cluster would be proposed for expansion. The approach that is suggested in the study to deal with the urban cluster policies would be to establish a new future land use designation with related policies to allow certain areas of urban mixed-use type development. And there would be specific policies for, for this property. At this stage, the study has included some discussion of the urban cluster policies and some of the issues related to that, but it does not provide data and analysis that specifically addresses the methodology for a potential expansion of the urban cluster. So given that, staff is proposing one of several conditions, but staff recommendation or condition number five recognizes that essentially the default land use scenario for this property would be what is allowed under the rural agriculture land use designation. And if, at the next stage of the process, there is a proposal for something more dense or intense than that, then there are some specific parameters and data and analysis needs and requirements that we've tried to lay out under that staff recommendation number five for things that would, that would need to be submitted as part of that application to essentially intensify the land use for the subject property. And so with that, I'm going to step aside and turn it over to Stephen Hofstadter to walk you through the strategic ecosystem evaluation.
Thank you. Welcome, Steve.
Thank you. Thanks, Ben. Good evening. I'm Steve Hofstadter with the Environment and Protection Department. I'm going to shift gears a little bit and we're going to get into the nitty-gritty of what's on this property, why it's strategic ecosystem, as well as kind of get into the details of, of what being a strategic ecosystem means. And then we'll give kind of a summary of the ground truth findings from the applicant's special area study, as well as staff's recommendations and conditions. Okay. So strategic ecosystem is a term unique to Alachua County. It is defined in the comprehensive plan and code as sites identified in the KBN Goldr Associates Report, also known as the Alachua County Ecological Inventory Report that was completed in 1996. So we've had these rules in place since 2007. And basically, the purpose of strategic ecosystem regulation is to protect, conserve, enhance, and manage the ecological integrity of our most sensitive and natural systems in Alachua County due to interrelationship of one or more landscape, natural community, or specific scale characteristics. It's also the purpose of these regulations to protect wetlands, floodplains, and associated uplands, and a broad systems context through resource-based planning across multiple parcels rather than individual parcel planning, which is why we're here tonight. The special area study and the plan process is the recommended option when development is proposed within strategic ecosystems. So Ben already showed you the map on the right. These areas in green are the 47 strategic ecosystems identified in the county. The one circled is the Hickory Sink Strategic Ecosystem, which is the property on the left, which is the area we're talking about tonight. As Ben mentioned, the, the boundary of the property is in red. And again, we're looking at the picture to the, to the right. The mapped strategic ecosystem is the area in blue. And the hashed, I'll call it orange, area is the area that's mapped within this property that we're talking about. To be determined, to, to have qualified and met one of the 47 areas in the KBN report, they reviewed property throughout the county and they used six parameters and 12 subparameters. And I think it's important to kind of go through what those are. They consist of the vegetation value in the property. This is species diversity, presence of non-native species, which is a negative, endangered species habitat, wildlife habitat, hydrology, which included Florida aquifer recharge, surface water and superficial aquifer protection, and the vulnerability of the Florida aquifer. Looking at landscape ecology, they looked at ecological community diversity, quality, rarity, and connectiveness. And finally, the management potential. So if we actually go back and look at the results of the KBN report related to the Hickory Sink Strategic Ecosystem, the list on the left are the scoring values for those 12 parameters. And I've highlighted the seven of the 12 parameters that qualified and made this property meet the requirements of a strategic ecosystem. So obviously, the higher the value, the, the better in terms of its ecological and natural significance. So in this case, this property has what is referred to as moderate exotic, which exotic species, which means some exotics present and landscape is conducive to the introduction of exotic plants and animals. In terms of endangered species habitat, a value of three means that the habitat potential from, for some listed species is moderate or good habitat for one or more species. It scored a wildlife value, wildlife habitat value of three, which refers to moderate cover, medium-edge to area ratio of the habitat, and commonly used for game and wild, and non-game animals. It scored high for Florida and aquifer recharge. And this is measured, this value is measured primarily by using Water Management District Florida and Aquifer Recharge Maps combined with percent of ultimate stream destination which flows into the Florida aquifer. The evaluation will range from little value for the unconfined parts of the county to great importance for the unconfined zone. So based on this location, it's identified as great importance for aquifer recharge and it also recognizes the existence of CARs features. Next is vulnerability of the aquifer is high. This is measured, assessed by the possible contamination concerns related to the property. The next high score is community rarity, which is a four. And it's considered habitat is rare based on only six to 20 occurrences in the state of Florida. And I'm going to kind of go through all of these as to what is unique to this property. And then finally, the management potential is what's called moderate. And basically, the, the report says it could be maintained in or restored in good condition, but would require vigilant management. Location or historic use suggests chronic problems with possibly trespassing or other neighborhood issues. And, and it does recognize that management would be a challenge. So before ground truthing, the amount of acreage on the property that's within this map strategic ecosystem is 2,279 acres. Part, what, what the comprehensive plan and code state is that prior to development of the property, if a special area study is done, the intent of that study is the ground truth, the existence of the strategic ecosystem resources. So it acknowledges that these maps were made at a time when we did not have the kind of GIS resources we have today. They were done based on typically on road lines, section lines, parcel boundary lines. So the strategic ecosystem report recognizes that there will be areas inside this boundary that may not qualify for protection. And I'll get into that detail a little bit. So based on the study and staff's assessment of the property, the project does contain a remnant sandhill, maybe better characterized as an upland pine community. It has upland mixed forests, caves, sinkholes, and other geologic features. It's a wetland that's located outside of the strategic ecosystem area on the southeast of the property, and I'll point out what that is. It's It also has improved pasture and unimproved pasture and pine plantation. These would be the areas that would most likely support development. And so over the next few slides, I'll summarize the results of the special area study, as well as provide some of the staff's assessment and recommendations. These are just three photos. The one in the middle is the small, about three-acre wetland on the southeast, southwest corner of the property. The one to the right is one of the chimney features of one of the caves, and on the photo on the left is kind of your classic gopher tortoise burrow, which is, this photo was taken in the area of the upland pine habitat. So, this is a map provided by the applicant in their study. They use the, what's called the Flux land use cover, and it stands for Florida Land Use Cover and Forms Classification System. Flux maps were made in 1999, and so the applicant consultant went out and verified the existence of these habitat areas, and I apologize, probably too small to see those classifications. I can kind of read them out, but the most common one, kind of in the middle, is 320. It's identified as shrub and brushland, and then 443 on this side is also one of the more common habitat types, which is identified as forest regeneration area. So, with staff's assessment, when we went out there, we did identify the shrub and brushland area, and the Palmetto Prairie area that's integrated into that area, some of the better upland pine area, which also known as red oak pine and hickory. There's also, in the forest regeneration area, there's other areas that we would consider significant habitat as kind of upland mixed hardwood forest. It's been heavily managed, and so there's a lot of, there's a lack of a lot of canopy species currently on that area. There's a couple other small pockets of habitats throughout there as well. There is about a 25-acre parcel within the UF Gift area, which I'll show later. It's about 25 acres. It is mature pine habitat right next to the existing home site, as well as some upland hardwood forest and hardwood conifer, which is pine-mixed forest on the far southwest corner, which I'll also identify in the next few slides. So to protect these habitat areas, staff does have conditions one, two, and three, which I'll address at the end instead of keeping, kind of repeating that theme. To evaluate the existence of rare species, one of the most common ways to verify the existence of a key species is a gopher tortoise survey, and gopher tortoises are considered endangered in the state and are known as a key species, which, what that means is they provide critical habitat and support for a significant number of other species. There's 150 known species that utilize their burrows. So typically, that's a type of animal that's often keyed on as habitat protection for listed species. So what we're looking at here is the applicant did what's called a 15% gopher tortoise survey. These are the, what they did was they randomly designate lines, and then they walked the entire transect. So these areas, if looking at the picture on the left, the red lines or pink lines are the transects that the applicants walked, and on the right side is the actual results of that survey. So, the burrows that are colored in green or blue are potentially active burrows. So you can, what I want to point out is you can see where the densities really start to increase in this area, and there's also some in here where in these, some of these other areas on the property, they start to thin out. Based on that, there was 461 potentially occupied burrows identified. Those were the green and blue dots. And based on FWC's calculation for how many tortoises that is, based on the total size of the property, the estimated number of tortoises is 1,532 tortoises with 3,063 burrows. So, the applicant's recommended set-aside areas are on your, the map to the left shows two colors. One is what they call the sandhill high pine area, as well as upland pine mixed forest. The upland pine mixed forest also has pockets and geologic features, sinkholes and caves associated with it as well. On the photo on the other side is two listed species of plants that were identified on the property. The pink spots are woodland poppy malla, which is a beautiful, if you've not seen it, it's a beautiful flowering plant with a very bright, pinkish-red flower, and then another species that's, a milk vine species that is found on the perimeter of one large sinkhole. So staff's assessment of the proposed set-aside is that the applicant is setting aside 681 acres or so of the upland pine habitat, as well as 166 acres of the upland mixed forest habitat that also supports tortoises as well, and also captures the majority of the listed plant species that are in and around those sinkhole features. Again, staff has three recommendations that will be included in the staff report to address the protection of those listed species, and that does include additional area of concern that I will describe in my next few slides as well. But I want to cover the other aspects of what designated this as strategic ecosystem before I get to those final maps. The next is, it is located within the springs and aquifer high recharge area. That consists of both the yellow and the brown area in the county, as well as the slashed areas, which are the stream-to-sink systems. So, any projects or properties within these areas have a high recharge capacity, meaning that these are areas that are important for keeping our aquifer safe and hopefully full of water. There's also, it's also within what we call the sensitive karst area, and these also are recognized as, in the development of a property, we need to be careful how we handle the storm water, as well as water quality issues, because these areas are identified as having direct connections to the aquifer. So we need to be very careful how we design development in these areas as well. So based on staff's assessment, the vast majority of the property is within the springs and high aquifer recharge area and in the sensitive karst area, and we'd be recommending water conservation nutrient and stormwater management processes, and those are our conditions six, seven, and eight in the staff report. Here are our significant geologic features. Again, this is from ECT, one of the consultants that did their geologic analysis for the applicant. Three different maps, starting on the left. The yellow circles are the significant geologic features. These would be caves and sinkholes, often having direct connection to the aquifer on a few occasions. The other triangular markings are sand-filled depressions. These would probably not qualify as significant geologic features, and kind of more relic-bowl-like features that we see all over areas of western and central Alachua County. And then the, there are a few man-made features as well. These were probably dug out for possible mining activity in the past or to provide water sources for their cattle. The picture in the middle has an added aspect of elevation, so as elevation drops, it turns more green. As you get higher in elevation, it turns more brown. So it kind of goes green, yellow, brown. I thought this was important to point out that this area in green has most of the geologic features, and it's also the area that we're recommending for protection as well. And then the photo to the right has, again, the identified significant geologic features with a buffer around them. Staff agrees with the applicant's assessment that there are, on the location of the significant geologic features, and supports the large area protection around the biggest cluster of these features, and we're recommending a minimum of five acres of conservation area around all of the other isolated geologic features as well. These are the significant geologic features. The staff also recommends site design criteria to help reduce any potential secondary impacts to these features as well. And again, our, we have recommendations one, two, three, seven, and eight that address concerns related to these features. Okay, so what I'm going to try to do now, I'm going to walk you kind of from the start before ground truthing to how, what our recommended map is for the final ground truth strategic ecosystem in terms of what we're recommending for protection. So prior to the ground truthing and the special area study, this is again the mapped strategic ecosystem. The hashed areas are the areas within this property that are identified as strategic ecosystem. The area in green represent the areas recommended for protection by the applicant, as well as areas identified by county staff to be within the strategic ecosystem area based on ground truthing. What I've added to the map also are two filled-in green areas to show that there are existing conservation management areas on adjacent properties that provide some connectivity between the suggested protected areas, so that there's connectivity, there is Parker Road there right here, but there's connectivity across Parker Road from one side to the other, as well as, and this is the conservation management area at Flit Rock Rural Cluster Subdivision, and this is the Gopher Tortoise Preserve area on Oakmont's Development. I do want to point out that this line is the edge of the strategic ecosystems. The applicant and staff have both recognized the need to protect the wetland feature, as well as provide connectivity to the southwest, so that there is connectivity to more natural areas and larger natural areas to the southwest. There's also a corridor recommended of 150 to 300 feet that would continue to go north, connecting to some habitat areas in the town of Tioga area as well. I think one hope would be that we'd also have a recreational trail that would help connect from Tioga down to what may be a future high school site right here, as well as an existing elementary school here. And this parcel right here is GRU's Water Recharge Park, which will also be developed to recharge water in as a wildlife-type park, so there would be connectivity to that as well. What is not included, based on the ground truthing, is the removal of dense pine plantation to the, this area to the north, as well as a large track of pine plantation here. The total area of this is about 1,490 acres, and again, that constitutes both the recommended protected area, as well as area that, based on the study, is not necessary to protect the integrity of the strategic ecosystem. That's what the study is trying to determine. However, it still qualifies as strategic ecosystem based on the habitat that's there. It's just a lower priority habitat. So under county rules, if you develop in a strategic ecosystem, you have to follow Policy 40603-B1 and 2, and what that means is you have to develop under the current zoning, which is one acre per five, and clustered. So you'd, any development in the pink slash, I'm not sure what you call that, pink-orange-salmon color, would have to be developed at a one-per-five density and clustered. And that is the requirement under Strategic Ecosystem Guidelines. So this is the map, Figure 1, that is in our staff's recommendation. So if, if, in October at a future meeting, if the commission support staff's, approves the study and supports staff's recommendation, this would be the map that currently is in staff's report that would, would be the area that we protected in green, so there would be a conservation easement placed over everything in green. And then the area in pink would be developed under Strategic Ecosystem Guidelines. We also included in blue the UF Gift area, which we've not talked much about. We don't currently have much information about that area, and, you know, that would be, is where the proposed golf course is. So that would be outside of the strategic ecosystem area. However, as I mentioned, there is an upland pine habitat here, and again, when we get into, down the line, we'll get into aspects of a golf course, if that's where we're headed. We would then get into the strategies, protection strategies, conditions, and so on to address concerns related to that. So in summary, based on the data provided in the special area study and staff's assessment, the property meets the designation of a strategic ecosystem based on average-to-high values for endangered species, wildlife habitat, community rarity, vulnerability, and the protection of the Florida aquifer, and the presence of sink features and caves. Based on, and this is just a point I want to make clear, based on the lack of management areas of the site, some habitat on-site has reduced species diversity and quality, and those, again, are those pink areas, but this does not disqualify these areas from retaining the strategic ecosystem designation. And then the special area study concludes that the areas in green represent the areas that should be protected and are protective. They demonstrate that the integrity of the system would be preserved, that they're protected under the current land use and zoning. So that's where I'll, I'll stop at this point. We have a few minutes for questions. These, this is the staff's recommendation. Again, we're not taking action tonight, but it would be to accept the study and authorize initiation of the process of a special area plan based on the conditions and parameters recommended by county staff. So at this point, what we could do is we could bring up the eight conditions that both Ben and I have talked about. Ben mentioned condition number five. I refer to one through three, one through four, and six, seven, and eight. So you want to put that over the overhead? Or I can, or we can take questions?
No, if we could see them, and then we can ask questions, because I see people writing questions up here.
I'm getting old, so I have to use reading glasses, so I'm going to read from a different sheet. Okay, so I'll go through the first four conditions. They relate to the topics I discussed. First is, at a minimum, the areas identified in Figure 1, as conservation management areas shall be protected with the approved permanent protection instrument and management plan prior to any site improvement, or as part of the first approved final development plan, whichever comes first. And that's consistent with how we approach protection of our resources with any development. Condition number two, Figure 1 of the staff report identifies only the minimum conservation areas to be set aside based on the recommendations of the special area study. Additional open space or conservation areas may be required as part of the special area plan and development review process to meet all county policies, regulations, and standards depending on the type, density, intensity of the proposed development and use. And condition number three, if development is proposed as part of a special area plan within the areas that are identified in the map in Figure 1, in the staff report as the SAP SE Development Standard, I know that's a mouthful, that refers to the Special Area Plan Strategic Ecosystem Development Standards, which apply to, these areas would be governed by subsection 40603-1 and 2 of the Unified Land Development Code. Or alternatively, any proposed development within each of these areas shall be required to be developed in accordance with the Cluster Rural Residential Subdivision Standards and Policies 6.29 through 6.213 of the Alachua County Comprehensive Plans' Future Land Use Element. And then condition number four, as part of additional assessments of the property, as part of the special area plan, in historic archaeological resource assessments... part of the special area plan and historic archaeological resource assessment, shall be completed for the property. This has not yet been done. This will help address any historical resources that should be protected prior to any part of development on the property. So I'll stop there. I'll have Ben go through five, which has a lot of sub parts.
Okay, so staff recommended, staff recommended condition number five. I will read it. As part of the special area plan for the subject property, the default development scenario, including allowable land uses, density, intensity, and applicable development standards shall be based on the current development rights for the subject property under the adopted comprehensive plan and land development regulations. Any proposed amendment to the comprehensive plan, which proposes development of the property at a greater density and intensity than would be allowable under the currently adopted comprehensive plan, future land use designation of rural agriculture, shall be based on the following parameters and address the following considerations. So these are the things that we would be looking for at the special area plan stage of the process if the applicant proposes a development scenario more intense or dense than what would be allowed under rural agriculture. So A is that development areas shall be arranged and clustered in a manner that, one, prioritizes the protection of conservation set aside areas, and two, clusters development areas in as close proximity as possible to areas within the existing urban cluster boundary so as to minimize the geographic extent of necessary expansions of urban infrastructure, facilities, and services, minimize areas of, of urban rural land use interaction, and ensure that land uses densities and intensities are consistent and compatible with the surrounding existing and future land uses within the western urban cluster. B, the special area plan shall address with appropriate data and analysis the requirements of Policy 7.1.3 of the Future Land Use Element regarding evaluation and potential expansion of the urban cluster. Item C under five, proposed development areas shall be served by urban infrastructure, facilities, and services, including roads, transit, centralized potable water and sanitary sewer, fire, NEMS, recreation, solid waste collection, stormwater management, public schools, and law enforcement at the same levels of service that are provided within the urban cluster in accordance with the comprehensive plan's capital improvements element. Data and analysis shall be provided on needs and costs for all necessary capital improvements to serve any proposed development areas. And necessary capital improvements and their funding sources shall be proposed for inclusion in the comprehensive plan. Sub item D under five, the transportation system for any development areas shall be designed consistent with the urban transportation mobility district policies in the transportation mobility element, including connectivity with the surrounding road network and existing development within the urban cluster. E is that development areas shall provide forward design concepts that are supportive of non-automotive modes of transportation in addition to automotive modes. Sub item F under five is that development areas shall be served by centralized potable water and sanitary sewer services in order to minimize proliferation of individual wells and septic systems. Any proposed extension of centralized potable water and sanitary sewer infrastructure that is proposed to serve new development on the property shall require that the application address policies 3.1.5 and 3.1.6 of the potable water and sanitary sewer element in the comp plan. And sub item G is that the special area plan shall provide for the contribution of a minimum of 50 acres of land to Alachua County or its designee specifically designated for the provision of affordable housing, targeting 50% to 80% AMI within the development areas of the property. That's a, that's something that was discussed in the special area plan documents, so we put that in as a, as a condition. So I'll, I'll turn it back to Steve to, to go over the rest.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, I've got just three more before we turn it over to the applicant. So condition six is for the special area plan identifies water conservation and low water use landscaping practices such as, but not limited to, set specific limits on permanent landscape irrigation, including reclaim water, irrigable area, and adherent to a water budget, prohibit permanently irrigated private residential lots, retain existing vegetation-designed landscapes to mitigate impacts on climate change, use of native vegetation in landscaping and promote no-mow landscaping. Condition number seven, the special area plan shall identify nutrient management practices such as, but not limited to prohibit the use of landscape fertilizer when reclaimed water is used for irrigation and encourage fertilizer-free landscapes, minimize clearing on existing vegetation, soil compaction, and earthwork during construction modeling the Madeira development. And finally, condition number eight, the special area plan should identify stormwater treatment and management practices such as, but not limited to employ LID, which is Low Impact Development, or Design as required by Chapter 77, Article 3, which is our Stormwater Treatment Code, distributed throughout the project modeling, again, the Madeira neighborhood. LID that stores and infiltrates runoff to meet the requirement of Stormwater Treatment Code should, at a minimum, preserve the underlying in situ soil or be backfilled with in situ soils with sufficient fines to retain moisture and encourage re, denitrification where high nutrient loads are expected in runoff, the use of engineering media soil designed for denitrification is encouraged. And then finally, low impact design approaches that reduce runoff such as disconnecting impervious surfaces, rain gardens, and rainwater harvesting on lots, pervious pavements, vegetated, vegetated natural buffers, and filter strips should be used to the greatest extent possible. So that concludes our conditions and we'll probably?
I think you did it.
Right on time for the applicant. Thank you.
You did it. Thank you. Commissioners, do you have anything burning that you can get in three minutes?
Not in three minutes.
Very quickly.
I have a, I have a slew, obviously, of questions. Great presentation, Steve, your team, and obviously the applicant spent a lot of time on that. But tonight is really mostly for me to listen to what the public has to say, so I'll, I'll hold, but I've got time. Thank you. Later.
If you have something, you've got three minutes.
Three minutes.
Like, like Commissioner Cornell, I have a lot of questions, but I do think tonight is about the public. I just have clarification on a couple of things really quickly regarding a few of the, the maps and other things. In reading the reports that were presented, there was a lot of questions about sort of habitat types and boundaries and sort of the analysis of those. And I'm just wondering if staff received that, enough of that information to be able to adequately address the potential total extent of those habitats in the strategic ecosystems as outlined in your maps?
Minutes.
Again, I have Stephen Hostetter, Alachua County Department of Protection. We, you saw the material we received, the maps, they, they utilized the flux maps and described those areas to us. I think within the strategic ecosystem, we have a pretty good grasp based on our, also our time out there in the field. The, the data was limited based on flux and based on the descriptions provided by the applicant in their special area study.
Great, thank you. I'll withhold the rest of my questions till later.
Thank you.
Thank you. Well done, you guys.
Madam Chair, can I just ask Steve one clarifying question?
You got one.
So really to summarize, Steve, we have aquifer, we have habitat. Staff is dealing with habitat in conditions one, two, and three, and aquifer in six, seven, and eight. And then there are obviously lots of questions that go with both of those, but is that, in summary, pretty accurate?
That, that's relatively accurate. In conditions two and three, there is an aspect of protecting those sinkhole features integrated into the habitat areas, which is why we're recommending that it still qualifies as strategic ecosystem. And there are design standards that would apply to those areas around those features.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Applicant time.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Good evening, Commissioners. As you know, I'm Patrice Boyes. I represent FCL Timberland and Cattle, LLP. I am in my 32nd year of practicing land use and environmental law all over Florida. Practice might yield perfection someday, but we're not there yet. I wanted to indicate and stress this evening that the context in which we're here tonight is very important. An estimated 329,000 new residents settled in Florida between April 2020 and April 2021, according to the, the State Office of Economic and Demographic Research. And these new folks are coming from Texas, New York, California, Atlanta, Chicago, and other countries. Alachua County itself has seen a growth rate of over 15% since 2010. The city of Gainesville's growth exceeded 13 and a half percent between 2010 and 2020, according to the census. These trends are expected to continue and over the next 30 to 40 years. I don't think it's hyperbolic to suggest that climate change likely will start to move populations inland from our coasts in Florida. I think we're starting to see that now. This greater demand, common sense would tell you, the law of supply and demand, the greater demand for housing with our currently fairly limited inventory, is being called by Forbes, the perfect storm in Florida. Price pressure has been exacerbated with Forbes reporting that this growth has increased rents and property values in excess of 30% statewide. The implications of that are well-known to this board. Recognizing this and planning for changing demographics is vital to maintaining the quality of life in our community. Thousands of units, thousands of units are in planning and production in our outlying small cities, but those new residents will still commute into the urban core for employment, goods and services, and education. It's better to keep them close to the urban core to conserve public infrastructure investments. Which brings me to the unique opportunity posed by the Lee family property, which is located directly abutting the urban core, albeit in the unincorporated part of Alachua County. This large property is best suited to accept the coming influx of new residents in a master plan community that could have innovative features for a more community-level resiliency. Tonight represents the culmination of more than two years of study of this 4,000-acre property involving more than 130 miles of linear transects walked by our biologists, field work by geologists, high-level assessment by land planners, et cetera. Let me emphasize to the public the word "study." We're not here to discuss a specific comp plan amendment or zoning, and certainly not a development plan. And I don't think we can give you detailed comments or reactions to some of the conditions here tonight. We think those are more appropriate for development plan review and certainly when we get to the comp plan. We think it's a little too soon to call out a specific development that we should, we should model. Rather, we're fulfilling your plan and code's requirement simply to complete a special area study. And we would have to do this study whether or not strategic ecosystems are on the property by virtue of its size. Your code requires the special area study. So that means the special area study has to be done sometime in this property's future. No time like the present for the reasons I mentioned earlier. Briefly, the idea and purpose of the special area study is to gather scientific information and make recommendations about the property's future, which will follow in a collaborative special area plan. At that point in time, we can propose plan amendments, and it sounds like we'll need to propose an amendment to your Unified Land Development Code to address development of those areas not set aside in the green portions that we have proposed. In this case, as a result of the study efforts, our team has proposed a balanced approach that marries resource protection and ecological rebound potential with ownership interests and private property rights as your plan, code, and state statutes require. And I want to briefly run through the, the key points that you'll hear more about from our other speakers this evening. Number one, 1,140 acres are to remain undeveloped, consisting of a very large tract of land for conservation set aside and a state-licensed Gopher Tortoise recipient site. In addition, acreage to protect significant geologic features, a 300-acre set aside on the proposed UF golf course, and creation of a bicycle pedestrian trail linking this property to surrounding developments, open spaces, and conservation set asides. Two, in partnership with IFIS, we're proposing a holistic conservation, conservation management planning effort to facilitate ecological rebound on this property. And you can tell by my use of that phrase, we have a different take on the conditions out there. Three, a master plan community featuring a mix of housing choices, a commercial mixed-use center, transit-supportive densities, plus central water and sewer to protect the aquifer. So we are, we're very transparent. We are seeking urban densities that support transit and all those policies in your comp plan. Four, continuation of agricultural zoning on the western edge of the property to provide both a physical barrier, which doesn't exist now, as well as to provide for lower intensity uses on the western reaches. Five, 50 acres voluntarily dedicated to affordable housing, preferably to a community land trust. We have begun, as of last week, substantive discussions with experts and providers who are very interested in partnering with us. We're very pleased about that. Six, with a master plan community, there exists the possibility for onsite vegetative composting for yard and common area trimmings rather than, as we do now, truck these, you know, biomass materials to the next county, to the landfill. And number seven, there is a strong potential for developing the county's first directed energy solar microgrid, which would service this project directly, as well as probably additional room for a utility-scale solar facility. We are very pleased to be here for your workshop, and we look forward to meaningful public input. And we sincerely ask that you give us a chance to impress. And with that, I'd like to introduce Val Lee, a member of the Lee family and one of the owners, who'd like to give you some comments.
Thank you.
Mr. Lee? And following him, so we save time, Jerry Deedenbach will come up next, followed by Dr. Charles Lane.
Welcome, Mr. Lee.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Val Lee. In my family, has owned this property for close to 70 years, if not over now. As of right now, we're a small family. My mother was an only child, and they're just the children left. I personally have managed this land since 1992, and judging by the crowd, I guess I've done a probably better-than-average job. Maybe I shouldn't have done it so much. My wife, Mary, and I live on the, live on the ranch right now, and we call Alachua County our home. At the very outset of this process, I'd like to make clear our wish for our land. We are not developers, we are not builders, we are ranchers. We've managed the land for over, as I said, seven decades. However, the cost and the location of the property have grown to the point where it's becoming more and more challenging to manage. We are an island amongst very large developments, and it has become a challenge for us to do anything out there. We've decided to go down this path because we truly believe that now is the time to collaborate and do something special out here. If we cared only about making a buck or two, we've talked to many developers over the last 30, 40 years who wanted to do things here, and we haven't done anything. We've waited, but we think now is the time. That's why we partner with some of the best experts, we think, in the world, here at our own University of Florida and the UF IFIS to help put a holistic, responsible plan together. That's why we've been talking to Alachua County and the community for over six years now. And not the first time y'all have seen us. And that's why we are here tonight, to invite the community to collaborate with us. And we are here to listen to your, your thoughts and proposals. And I said, we know there's going to be a lot to figure out and work through together on, but we know that, and we are willing to do that with anyone willing to do the same with us. We think that, we thank you for having us this evening, and we look forward to working together. And I'd like to pass this along to Jerry. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lee.
Thank you, Val.
Good evening.
I guess if they could... I guess if they could turn on the projector. Perfect, thank you. Well, y'all know me. I've been standing here for 32 years, as Pat has. First 12 years was with the MTPO and looking at the interrelationship of land use and transportation planning. In the last 20 years, has been sometimes representing public sector clients, private sector clients, sometimes representing a request to be on different boards that I serve on. I'm happy to be here tonight, and this is really unique, you know? We started this process a couple of years ago, and I think, you know, both your staff, Ben and Steve, did an exemplary job on something that y'all have never done before. An SAS, or a special area study, has not been implemented on behalf of a private land owner, ever. And so we're kind of forging our own ground here. But as Patrice stated, and as your staff stated, that irrespective of whether we were going to develop this property today, or if somebody was looking at something in the future, you would have to do an SAS, a special area study, and follow that with a special area plan merely because of the property's size. We have, I guess, the added benefit and opportunity of having strategic ecosystem on the site. And I say that as a benefit because when we look at the bigger picture, often we're really, really focused on this property, or this acre, or this plot of land. Here, we're talking about a definitive future and a definitive difference that we can make here in Elatua County. When we spoke at the onset of this project with staff members and commissioners, because obviously this is a legislative choice, I got a really good question day one. Why here? Why here, Jerry, and how would this be different? And I thought about it for a couple of minutes, and the answer was, because we can set the bar higher than it's ever been set before through a collaborative planning mechanism. So when we started this process, we looked at what one could do today, and the PowerPoint that I'm going to share with you all here tonight is largely the same as what we did during our stakeholder workshops over in Celebration Point and then online, and that we've repeatedly used throughout the process with stakeholders and, you know, agencies like the MTPO and others to talk about this process. In the existing framework of continued agricultural use, it's kind of a dead-end future in the sense that development has built up to and abutting the property. It's becoming more difficult to manage. The family, as Val just stated, have been on the property for seven decades, and this is not the best scenario for Elatua County as a whole. In fact, if you read the comprehensive plan and the elements of the comprehensive plan, they promote good master planning. They promote the collaboration of land use and transportation scenarios, and infrastructure, and capital improvements to look to our future. This is not something that's going to happen tomorrow or in the next five years, but this is something that looks 25, 40, 50 years into our future. And as Patrice stated, thousands of people are moving to Florida. We will have to address the way we develop here. It is not a misnomer that there are 17 residential subdivisions being proposed in Newberry. There is a single subdivision in High Springs that's being proposed with 2,000 residential dwelling units in it. And the reason it hasn't gone through is they don't have adequate water and sewer. But I guarantee you that if a portion of those plans in Newberry, or Elatua, or High Springs are approved, they're driving back on our roads to Gainesville to go to the University of Florida, Santa Fe College, the UF Health, the VA, and they're still going to use our resources. So through a collaborative planning process, we can create a new higher bar for everyone to follow. And that's why we want to work with you and your professional staff. Under the buy-right scenario...
Jerry, I'm sorry, you don't have a copy of this to give us to you by chance?
A paper copy?
Yeah.
I don't have a paper copy.
Okay, that's fine. I'm taking notes. I was going to take it on that, but I'll just take it on this. That's okay.
No problem. Under the buy-right scenario, if you were to take one unit per five acres and divide 4,068 acres, you'd end up with 813 lots that would be put together in a clustering provision under your comprehensive plan, and you'd have at least a minimum of 50% set-aside, very similar to that project that sits in the middle of this, the Flint Rock project. But because that type of development, the rural cluster, is a very low-intensity development, it doesn't make financial-practicable sense to include water and sewer in there, or things like sidewalks, or the amenities that you would generally have associated with urban development in a community that has tremendous urban potential. What we don't want to see are at least 813 wells and 813 septic tanks on the property, and we don't want to see Elatua County and its citizens and its future shortchanged by taking a cluster subdivision-type policy. What we do want to see is a collaborative planning process where, together with your professional staff, and the community, and you as the elected officials, where we can define specific comprehensive plan policies that addressed land management, ecological restoration and rebound, housing policies, and adding equitable housing choices in here, and affordable workforce housing, and codify that, or put that into the code from the start. We can also specifically address energy options by including solar from the start, including things like a microgrid and directed energy concept so that it feeds the actual area where it's located, as well as the inclusion from the start of community facilities such as police, fire, EMS, schools, and added recreation. And then lastly, group all these elements together under a combined planning scenario that memorializes the partnerships between the University of Florida, IFIS, and others that have a vested interest in our long-term future. We believe that then density and intensity here can be determined through the county's land use and zoning process through the special area plan. We believe that water usage can be addressed through the inclusion of centralized water and centralized sewer systems to eliminate septic tanks and injury or risk to the Floridian aquifer. And lastly, the community assets that can be brought forward in a collaborative planning scenario include a multimodal network where everyone can be connected without the reliance on single-occupant vehicles, meaning that we can build trails, transit, and walking paths, and connect many of the elements that are in western Elatua County. So here is the area. This is roughly six square miles of land. There's 14 parcels on the west side and a dozen parcels on the east side, and it has largely been in an active agricultural sense for the last century. As time has progressed, subdivisions such as Parker Place, Oakmont, Biltmore, Wilds Plantation, Hale Plantation, the Town of Metcalf, and Lugano have all built up to and are abutting the edge of this property. So urban development is at the boundary of the property. A couple of years ago, kind of early in the pandemic, we did something new. On the D's property here, we created the county's first agri-hood. And on this 400 acres, we set aside the northern portion of that site because it too has strategic ecosystem, and created what's conservation open space on the north side, and these other green areas here are non-conservation open space, in an effort to reforest those pasture areas. In the broader framework of looking at where this property lies, on the west side, you see the jagged boundary of the city of Newberry. Here's the city of Archer, a couple miles to the southwest, and here's the city of Gainesville as it crosses the I-75 corridor. The roadway network that we would look at during a special area plan would address the state of Florida's State Road 26, Newberry Road on the north side, State Road 24 on the south side, and then the remainder of the roadway network out here is county roads such as Parker Road, 24th Avenue, 91st Street, Hale Boulevard, Parker Road, and then, of course, 241 South connecting from Newberry Road down into the city of Archer. The county's existing comprehensive plans don't show any roadway modifications in that network, but they do show multimodal-type opportunities in there. What's very important in here is as development has moved up to that edge, and here you see from Arbor Greens, and Laureate Village, and Tioga, and Jockey Club, all these subdivisions, what's also come up against that edge is the Gainesville Regional Utilities Service Area, where potable water and sanitary sewer, and in cases here, reclaimed water, electricity, natural gas, and fiber optic are all there. So in order to activate a piece of property, we are very, very close to, and it is an efficient use of the resources that are in our infrastructure to do so. Moreover, when Oakmont was designed, it has two connections on the south side, and over here in Lugano, there are three connections, and a connection here in Hale Plantation. So this has always been envisioned to be a part of the urban area of Elatua County. On the west side, we do have sort of a unique feature in that we have a public airport, the Flying 10 airstrip here, but this property today all has rural agricultural land use and zoning on it. And so that is the reason why we are here, is to address moving to the next step, hopefully after October 11th, to create a collaborative plan with your professional staff, you as elected officials, and the public. But for the strategic ecosystem, we would still be here because we have 4,068 acres, and it is our obligation to link this space and respect areas in here that have been ground-truth. So again, as Parker Place, Oakmont, Biltmore, Wilds, Hale, Town of Metcalf, and Lugano have all built up against this boundary here, we also realize that when Flint Rock was done, it has preserved portions of that strategic ecosystem, and we want to capitalize on that and promote that interconnectivity that this area presents. So superimposing Flint Rock in there, what we can also say is that this is the new elementary school K that was dedicated in 2005 as part of the Oakmont Plan Development. Elatua County Public Schools has the former Diamond Sports Park, and Gainesville Regional Utilities has about an 80-acre groundwater aquifer recharge park located here that will promote aquifer recharge through a series of littoral-type wetlands. As I stated, the county's comprehensive plan currently doesn't have any transportation modifications all the way out through the plan horizon, but what it does have are rapid transit corridors envisioned that would go along the Hale Boulevard area and would interconnect through the property through Oakmont, and then interconnect Jonesville to Archer Road and part of a multimodal system. So we are seeking, or will seek, in a special area plan, investigation of opportunities for transit-oriented development on the property. As staff stated, and Patrice stated, the SAS data analysis included miles and miles of habitat transects, and out of the six square miles of land, more than two square miles are being proposed as primary or secondary conservation open space. 840 on the west side, 150 on the east side, 40 acres for a PED cycle trail to connect to the town of Tioga, and then 300 areas within the area that would be proposed as the UF Golf Course. The key component is, we would like to build off of the same management principles that were utilized in Flint Rock and take those to the next level, and do that through the collaborative work with Dr. Lane and Dr. Angle to create a management system and a rebound ecological potential for this property that would again set the bar for Elatua County. So when we're looking at this area, as staff stated, and I show a more generalized map, we are looking at the ability to have interconnectivity across this set-aside, which would become more than a square mile with a gopher tortoise preserved inside that area. Also, a strong connection to the southwest so that these areas here that are currently forested, and the one wetland that exists on the entire property here could be adequately protected, and then a connection north that would link to the town of Tioga. This would allow parents, children, and, you know, general recreation so that people could walk, bicycle, skate, scooter, all the way down from Tioga down to this management area, or over here to the GRU, Groundwater Aquifer Recharge Park, or over to a future high school, or an elementary school, or a middle school to be located in this property. It's key to interconnect to the conservation open space in Flint Rock, as well as the non-conservation open space, because we see not only the north-south connections of this ecosystem, very important, but also on this side. On this portion that was outside of the strategic ecosystem, this is the UF gift area. And as we talked about, and as Steve showed, this area in Oakmont that I have flashing green is the central open space within the 556 acres of Oakmont. We want to see a strong connection north-south here so that it takes in those significant geological features and other man-made features so that this all becomes a system of strategic management and strategic open space areas in Elatua County. That would then cross-connect across Parker Road, and we would not lose functional connectivity in the regional framework. So when looking at this, and I'm going to conclude real quickly here, we looked at a no-build option, because that's what you do. If nothing happens, what is the future of this property? How manageable is it? We looked at a scenario with a couple solar collection facilities on the west side, preserving this area as agriculture, and considering that maybe a cluster of subdivision of land and residential areas would go here, maybe a cluster of residential homes would go here, and maybe a cluster would go here, and there would be conservation open space across portions of this property. What we also looked at was, what if we looked at urban residential densities on the property to create not only a mechanism to fund and to proliferate the ecological rebound in these areas, but also to set the bar as an example of what Elatua County can do and how we can accommodate future citizens in our community? So with that, this is your meeting tonight. We're not here to stand and give you a pitch about anything other than the fact that we would really like to continue with this planning effort with your professional staff, with the public, and you as stakeholders, to help define something that will hopefully endure for generations to come. The Lee family have been stewards of this for about 70 years, and we were trying to look at the next 70 to 100 years. And with that, I'd like to introduce Dr. Charles Lane, the University of Florida Chief Operating Officer.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Dean.
Thanks, Jerry.
(inaudible)
Yes.
Waiting, could we ask for copies of all the presentations that they had? I don't, they weren't in the backup for some reason.
Thank you, Madam Chair, Commissioners. Glad to be here representing the University of Florida. We are pleased to demonstrate our support and involvement in this project this evening, and thank all of you for the opportunity to make a few comments tonight. I have a few of my colleagues with me. As Patrice and Jerry mentioned, Dr. Scott Angle is with us tonight. He is the Senior Vice President of the Institute of Food and Ag Sciences. Mr. Chip Howard is the Executive Associate Athletics Director. Ms. Lynda Dixon is our Director of Planning, and Susan Crowley is our Assistant Vice President for Community Relations tonight, showing support of this project. So we feel very fortunate that UF and UAA have been given an opportunity to acquire nearly 600 acres of property through the generosity of the Lee family. It is absolutely an astounding opportunity for us to do something that we've been wanting to do for some time. The Lees could certainly have done something else with this property, as Jerry just explained, but we're so happy to have this opportunity. We also feel great pride in the fact that IFIS is going to be helping us to anchor this project by lending technical and scientific support. I think there's really more to be said about that than the golf course, which I'll talk about, but Scott will explain a little bit about that. So in this sense, IFIS will give us some needed advice concerning construction and maintenance of the course, and importantly, in the management of over 1,000 acres of ecological set-aside. This commitment is virtually perpetual. IFIS will be here for a very long period of time, helping us manage this property, and I think that's important to think about when you think about other developments that don't have this asset. So tonight, I'm going to make a few high-level remarks, and then I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Angle. Next, I'll come back and I'll talk about five design principles that we plan to incorporate in the design of the golf course. I'll speak a little bit about the community benefits, and then finally, I'll talk about a program called the First T Program, which is a fabulous program we hope to introduce with the golf course, which will... with the golf course, which will introduce youth to the game of golf, but also leadership principles they can apply throughout their life. It's an outstanding program, and so I look forward to telling you about that. And with that, I'm going to introduce Dr. Scott Angle.
Thank you, Dr. Lane, and Commissioners, thank you for your time to be with you today. I always look for an opportunity to brag about IFIS, so first, let me start with that. IFIS is a strong organization with great capacity to support this project. From an agricultural perspective, we rank number two nationally, number eight globally in traditional agriculture and forestry. We are number two in natural resources management. The National Science Foundation ranks UF IFIS as the number-one program in the world for federal support. Many, many other programs, particularly as related to the environment and preservation and protection. We're growing our programs in a variety of different areas, urban agriculture, local food systems. These are things that are changing in Florida quite rapidly, and so what you have seen in IFIS today will be a little different tomorrow, but we will always maintain our strength in those traditional areas. I say all that to let you know that we have tremendous capacity to support this project. We have often the world's experts in a variety of different areas. These are the people who wrote the textbooks that are utilized for management of a variety of ecosystems. Our faculty are ready, they're willing, and capable of being involved in a way I will describe in just a minute. Some of you may know that a couple, about almost a year ago, we were gifted by the DeLuca family, what we now call the DeLuca Preserve, about 100 miles south of here. It is a wonderful living laboratory for our scientists. Our scientists and their laboratories are the living lands, whether it's managed, like agriculture, or natural lands that will be protected in perpetuity. Our scientists, they don't have the laboratories in buildings, so Dr. Lane worries all the time about where to find new laboratories for our medical program, or for our engineers, but I worry about where are we going to find those new laboratories for our scientists that work in the field. DeLuca was a fantastic addition to our system, but it's almost 100 miles away, and it's over two and a half hours from here, so it's hard to get our students there for training and for classes. It's hard for our graduate students and our faculty to get back and forth within a day. So while that is a tremendous property for us to study the evolution of ecosystems over time, from very unmanaged to relatively strongly managed, we need more of our living laboratories, and this is one where I offered to Dr. Lane and others the possibility of our faculty getting involved to use this as our laboratory. We are able to help plan. We can, to a lesser extent, help implement a variety of these technologies on this property. We can assess, and we can study, and we can research, and we can train our students on this property, and we can evaluate the impact of the practices that have been implemented on, in these natural areas. So we very much would like to be involved. I don't have any details on how that specifically may happen. Certainly, I'm not in a position to redirect resources away from other programs to this, so that is one of the issues that I would have to worry about. But we see this as an opportunity for both research, extension, and teaching of undergraduates and graduate students, having a living laboratory that our faculty needs so close to the campus. You've heard a little bit already about the golf, proposed golf course. Golf courses are changing. They are not what they used to be 50 years ago. We are moving away from intensive management to more natural types of ecosystems, where there is less management, less use of fertilizer, less use of pesticides, less use of water. Our faculty, in our turf grass program, which is centered in agronomy, wrote, literally wrote, some of the manuals for sustainable management of turf grass on a golf course. But we have never had a way, either on the existing golf course or other places within a reasonable driving distance, to use that course as a demonstration for the technologies that we developed, but have not yet been implemented on a golf course that is close enough for our students to appreciate. So in particular, we would love to be involved with the golf course, in the planning, in the design, and more certainly, in developing new technologies, so that turf grass, the impact of turf grass and golf on the environment can be minimized to the extent possible. So we very much see lots of opportunities here. We're excited about this. Not all the details are worked out at this point, but I wanted to come today, and I asked Dr. Lane if I could be here, so that I could express my interest in being part of this project to support our faculty and students. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Scott. Again, Charlie Lane, University of Florida. Scott stole most of my script, but I'll continue on. I did want to highlight the, looks like, eight different areas that IFIS can lend support in, as it relates to the golf course. And if you look to the left, this Best Management Practices for the Enhancement of Environmental Quality of Florida Golf Courses Manual that IFIS has been involved in, so as Scott said, heavily, heavily involved in golf course management. Let me turn to athletics for just a minute, UAA. As most of you know, we have a football team that we're all very fond of, but UAA is also fond of its baseball teams, its swimming teams, its tennis teams, lacrosse, soccer, and so on. So golf is also very important to UAA, but this is a space in which we feel a need to invest at this point in time. The men's and women's golf program, as you see, boasts six national championships, men's and women. A new course would provide us an opportunity to bring the golf standard up to where we feel like it needs to be at this point in time. The course, while it's served us well for over 100 years, is in dire need of some changes to be brought up to standards. And this last point about recruiting top talent, I know it's hard to believe, but it's tough for us to recruit some of the top college athletes to come to Gainesville University of Florida, because our course and the program is just not up to the standards other programs have. Again, designed in 1921, over 100 years old, it's virtually obsolete by today's standards, and I know that's hard to believe. If you don't play golf, I certainly don't play very much, I don't have time, but it's still a very popular game, as you can imagine. But it does put our team at a competitive disadvantage. It's not as difficult as many other courses, and certainly not as long. It's at least 1,000 yards short of what most contemporary college, really competitive courses are, which puts us at a disadvantage when we play on these longer courses. So, and we're unable to host some of the NCAA and USGA championship events that we'd like to. Our current course is about 6,700 yards long. Courses that are being built now are 7,700, 7,800, 7,900 yards in length, and so this is one reason why we're so thrilled the Lee family has offered up this property for us. The last point I'll make here, we've been asked a lot about that, this, what's going to happen to the current course? We have every intention of keeping this course running. The team will undoubtedly use it. The public that uses it now will continue to have an opportunity to use it. So I just want to make sure you understand that. It will continue to serve the community. So let me turn to these five design principles. We've talked a bit about sustainable ecosystem. I thought Scott did a brilliant job of explaining how IFIS can be inserted into this model. Water management, fertilizer and pesticide management, stormwater planning, and then waste management. And Mr. Hofstadter mentioned a number of these things today as well. So we see this, the golf course itself, as an ecosystem, but also this larger 1,000-plus acres is an ecosystem that we need to manage. We really do hope to promote enough variety in the landscape with IFIS's advice, to create a space that will support a number of different types of habitat that maybe we couldn't have, actually, support right now, and to connect with those pathway corridors that Jerry talked about a moment ago. We certainly want to provide water access for wildlife that may not already exist. There's not necessarily a lot of water out there now, and I'm thinking with retention ponds and other things that will be built, it will certainly serve that purpose. And then lastly, we want to participate in the National Audubon Golf Course Program in tangent with the program that Scott and his team have developed. Water management, again, this has been highlighted. We know how important this is, and we certainly want to reduce the amount of water that's used in a course like this. But as Scott pointed out, the courses that you see today are not what were built 20, 30, 40 years ago. They will not have the sprinkler systems that we see in our lawns, or that we see on a lot of courses around town now. There will be spot sprinkling that's done. The systems that we have now are really, really sophisticated, folks, and they'll only touch on those parts of the property that need to be touched on when there's a need for water. We'll record that data, and of course, submit it to the state of Florida as needed. Fertilizers and pesticides, we talked about this as well. We certainly will need to use some, but we will do it within the constraints of as little as possible to minimize damage. And I think it's fascinating, if you look at how greens are managed now, there's, now, if you go to that fourth point, controlling the microclimate on green surfaces using hydronics, hydronics and sub-air methods, this is actually a process by which they created an infrastructure beneath the green, where there are pipes and tubing that allow hot and cold air, water and air, to either remove water and/or supply different temperatures of air to allow the roots to grow much more strongly, and that reduces the need for pesticides. So I just want to assure you that we will be building a state-of-the-art facility that you certainly won't see in Gainesville or surrounding area. Few in the country will be this sophisticated. Stormwater planning, obviously very important. We get a lot of rain here in this area, and we know the importance of managing this on this property. We'll try to use as much of the rainfall that we have to irrigate, and we'll certainly plant in that safety zone buffers to prevent fertilizer and runoff. Waste, this was touched upon as well. I think Patrice may have mentioned this, the idea that we're going to recycle virtually all the grass and clippings that come off this course and reuse it in some way or another on the course. I assure you, we'll have testing mechanisms onsite, literally laboratories, to help make sure that we manage waste in the proper way. And of course, any waste oil or equipment will be disposed of properly. Golf course operations, also, this has changed a lot in recent years. We hope to use as much electric maintenance equipment as possible, and to use solar energy as much as possible, and to the extent that the solar grid is, microgrid is put in, we could be 100% solar in time, when that comes in. So really, an effort here to consume energy. So community outreach, this is something that I know several of our Commissioners are interested in, and we certainly are. This golf course is going to give us an opportunity that hasn't existed in this way in the past. It's going to create a number of jobs, which we're really excited about, and I think just because of the nature of the course, it will allow us, as a community, to use this car, this course as an industry location in some ways. It'll attract our alums and professionals to come to the community and spend their monies, and that's important. I mentioned the First Tee Program earlier, and I'll talk about that in my last final slide. I think there's an opportunity here to use the course for community events and celebrations. We just don't know quite yet what that's going to look like. And of course, on the environmental front, we're creating a really great recreational green space here that so many people can use that currently can't, can't take advantage of this. So turning our attention to this last slide, this First Tee Program, as I mentioned earlier, this is a nationally-recognized program. There's 150 chapters of this program nationally, and we have access to this program. It's headquartered in St. Augustine. It is a great program that allows youth to participate in and learn golf, but most importantly, to learn problem-solving, time-management, relationship-building skills, just some of the values that it touches on: honesty, integrity, sportsmanship, respect, confidence, responsibility, perseverance, courtesy, and judgment. It's really highlighted for after-school activities, so we hope to introduce this into the, in all areas of the community, but especially East Gainesville. You'll note here on the educational impact, 98% of those participating high school seniors graduated. 84% went to college, joined the military, or pursued other post-secondary education, and over $12 million in scholarships awarded each year. So it's just a fabulous program. You also see in terms of DE and I, diversity, equity, inclusion, 52% of the participants are non-Caucasian, and 39% of the participants are female. So we're very excited to bring this program with the introduction of this golf course. So I'll conclude there. Commissioners, thank you very much.
Thank you, Dr. Lane. Anyone else from applicant team? So you all are available for questions, then, from our Commission here? All right. Commissioners, do you all have any question for the applicants?
Chair, again, I have lots of questions, but I see a lot of people out here, probably people on the phone, so I'm going to wait and listen, listen to the public first.
Okay. So do you all have anything, then, for our, because once these folks talk, I don't know that we're going to get back to...
Yeah, they might be leaving.
Okay, all right. Okay, you guys are going to be able to hang around for a little while? Our team, too? Okay, thank you. All right, then, we beat the 7 o'clock time that we had set aside.
Madam Chair, just so you know, we have one, two, three, four, possibly five callers.
All right, thank you so much. What I'd like to do is take two folks from the community, and then one from the phone, so that we can kind of alternate just a little bit until we get those folks taken care of. All right, thank you. Come and tell us your name. You have three minutes.
Thank you. My name is Bobby Murmer. I'm the Coordinator for the Alachua County Labor Coalition. Thank you, Chair, Commissioners. The ACLC has not yet taken a position on this project or this proposed development, but I do want to urge the Commission to approach this very, very cautiously. UF is involved. ACLC's experience with UF, as well as my experience as the leader of the Graduate Workers' Union UF, has taught me that their administrators can... Be careful trusting them.
All right. Excuse me, ladies and gentlemen, we are going to keep this as friendly to you and tonight, so that means...
You know, I, I just want to urge the Commission to approach this very, very cautiously. Hickory's property is a treasure, and we don't want to ruin it just because of some new plan or vision that some administrator at UF has had. I also want to let you know the ACLC is looking forward to seeing where the Sierra Club, one of our member organizations, falls on this, and then I will be recommending to the ACLC that we take the same position as the Sierra Club. Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, next speaker. Wait, I'm sorry. What are you... Oh, I beg your pardon, I've got to remind my... Thank you, sir. All right, we have someone ready to go. Just introduce yourself, please.
My name's Karen Garen. This is a statement in reference to the proposed land use amendment for the development of the Lee property. Review of the SAS report raises concerns, including situation over a major aquifer recharge zone, loss of agriculture ranch land, extension of services, infrastructure promoting urban straw, preservation and management of gopher tortoise habitat, limitations of affordable housing, and lack of public transit options. However, of primary concern are the consequences and potential future impacts in amending the ULDC and extending the UCL. Land use attorney Patrice Boyes says that this property isn't special, but that's incorrect. The report is titled "Special Area Study," and based on the KBN Strategic Land Survey, which described the region as the best example of longleaf, red oaks ecosystem in Florida. Caves and sinks contain rare fauna and support large bat colonies. This property is also special because it features remnants of the once-vast upland, sand hills, and mixed forest ecosystems. At the October 11th meeting, the Alachua Board of County Commissioners has several options. One, to attempt to renegotiate purchase and preservation as conservation area, and I hope that the Lee family is still open to that. Sources of funding could include a combination of wild spaces, public places, state and rural family lands protection programs, and possibly federal natural resources conservation service funds. And you may remember that Mr. Hutchinson proposed some of these. The Commission could, too, the Commission could reject the SAS report, maintain the property at its current zoning level. The existing byright zoning density could be clustered into small portions near Parker Road, with the remainder put into conservation reserve status. A third option would be for the county... A third option would be for the county to amend the Unified Land Development Code to make rural rezoning more stringent. New ordinances should eliminate wholesale land clearing, only removing construction and roadway footprints, leaving the majority of canopies, natural seed banks and burrowing species habitat. Sod lawns and non-native landscaping should be prohibited. Golf courses are a bad investment. The Meadowbrook and West End golf courses are examples of failed management practices. They eliminate wildlife habitat, they consume vast amounts of water, they produce nutrient pollution and are sources of invasive, exotic invasives and are an elitist recreational activity. The planned development villages could contain their own package sewage treatment plants. On-site recycling facilities could sort organic compost waste from that destined for landfill. Water resources supplies are shrinking. There are no good measurements for estimating reserves in the Murphy...
Thank you very much. Do we have someone online? Ready to go?
We do, Madam Chair. And I just want to remind the callers, if you want to speak, please press star nine to raise your hand. Right now of the folks in the attendee room, we have one person whose hand is raised. And if the caller whose number ends in 3410 would press star six, and you'll have precisely three minutes.
Thank you, welcome.
Hi, good afternoon. Hi, commissioners. My name is Darrell Washington and I, first of all, I want to thank each and every one of you for this call this evening. And I am a resident on the board of Parker Place. And a couple of members do have some concern. The concern is in three areas and I'll be relatively quick here. Concerning the golf course, the residents have a concern about runoff water. We also have a concern about pesticides and also fertilizer. Where we live is actually, we are on well water and there's a huge concern that our wells may become contaminated. So that's an area of concern that residents do have here. Secondly, we're concerned about the traffic and the connection points that most of the residents that I've spoken with do not want any connectors coming through our subdivision. We only have one way in and one way out of our subdivision and no through streets, no cut-throughs from leading from the golf course coming through our subdivision. That'll create a massive traffic problem there. And we don't want to actually be in a position where we're waiting to get out of our subdivision with 10 to 15 cars deep just to get out of our subdivision to get on Parker Road. So at this point, the residents that I've spoken with just seem to think that this is perhaps, it's not a good idea in terms of connectivity through streets coming through Parker Place and we are concerned about our water. There's no fertilizer that I know that's available that should be consumed for drinking water, so we don't want that to contaminate our wells. So I want to thank each and every one of you, including all the presenters.
Thank you very much, sir. Next speaker.
Good evening. My name is Bruce Morgan. I would like to begin by thanking the staff. I think they did an excellent presentation. However, I don't think enough emphasis or enough study has been given to the signature feature for which this project is named. That is Hickory Sink. Hickory Sink is an open carst window. And we know that throughout this area in North Florida, many of these open carst windows and the chimneys that are associated with them very often contain species that are unique to that very place, endemic only to that one hole. And I've heard nothing discussing the biota of Hickory Sink itself. I think that needs to be looked into and I also think that given the lack of surface water in the area, that it is entirely likely that there are archaeological resources that have not been discovered because the studies have been inadequate. Now, let me diverge from what I really came here to talk about and just simply say that I'm appalled that the University of Florida has nothing better to worry about than a golf course. Golf, for all the happy talk that they've given us and all the images that show minorities and youth playing golf, the fact of the matter is that golf is an activity that effectively destroys the ecosystem. It is pursued by elderly white men. That's who plays golf. We all know that to be true. And why would IFAS, which is supposed to be about food and agriculture, have nothing better to worry about than turf grass? Because lawns are disappearing at the same rate as golfers. But that's not why I came here today. Some of you may see that I'm wearing this t-shirt.
Yes, sir.
That's because, not too many years ago, our county was faced with what amounted to an existential crisis, an enormous development being proposed east of town by the largest and most powerful landowner in America. Thanks to you, we held the line. We beat them. And I ask that you do the same today. Turn this down flat. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Morgan. Next speaker. Come right, come right on. There's no one there, so I'm...
Yeah, if you want to divide up.
You certainly may. And I promise to look over there if you all want to go so that there's one ready to go. All right, go right ahead, sir.
Okay. My name is Eric Amundson. I'm with Alachua Audubon Society. I'm on the board. And I'm here with Pratiba Singh, who is also with Audubon, and Kayla Erlich, who is going to be speaking in a minute and reading Bob Simon's letter to the board, to the commission. I wanted to mention that Audubon's mission statement is to foster appreciation and knowledge of birds and other native wildlife, to protect and restore wildlife populations and their habitats, and to promote sustainable use of natural resources. I say that because in talking to some of my friends and colleagues, I realize or I've come to learn that this property on the west side of Parker Road is one of the last remaining lands suitable for preservation as a wildlife natural area with potential use for nature trails, horseback riding, longleaf pine ecosystems preservation. So what I'm suggesting or asking is that the commissioners look into and explore all options for federal funding and local partnerships for purchase and preservation of this property before going ahead with proposals that we've seen tonight. There's a lot of federal money coming available and is available for this sort of thing. Now, I'm not sure what kind of research has been done in that direction, but we do have partnering agencies in Alachua County that would be glad to get involved also. Thanks.
Thank you. Thank you for coming. All right.
Okay, Madam Chair. The caller ending in 7795, if you would press star six. And you have three minutes, please state your name.
Hi there. I want to make sure that folks can hear me first.
Yes, sir.
Excellent. Hi, my name's David Hastings. I'm a resident of Alachua County and I really greatly appreciate the opportunity to talk about concerns related to the Lee property here. My understanding is that there are three options before the commission today or in October. And I ask that the third proposal, so either accept, accept with the modifications, or deny the request to move forward to devise a special area plan. I ask that you deny the current master planning scenario that's detailed in the special areas study. So along with many other people, I have numerous concerns and I want to focus on three of them. One is sprawl. And we know that the location for this, the Lee property, is far from the urban core of Gainesville. And this development in an undeveloped area which encroaches on the natural environment will in turn encourage more sprawl in the area and will serve as a serious risk to the sensitive wetlands. I really think we need more development closer to the urban core rather than further away. So close to the urban core, there's existing mass transit, existing infrastructure that can be best utilized. The second component I'm concerned about is the habitat for numerous species, including gopher tortoises. We know that longleaf pine forests, which is what is, a lot of which is on the property, are some of the world's most biologically diverse ecosystems. And it provides critical habitat for numerous, almost 30 threatened and endangered species, including gopher tortoise. So we can set aside land for a gopher tortoise reserve and relocate gopher tortoises, but that's not a viable alternative since it results in increased density, which is not sustainable. And finally, I want to address the golf course. We do know that golf courses can be a significant source of nutrient pollution and require substantial irrigation, no matter what new advanced technology we are hoping to have. The impact on the fluid and aquifer and the water quality is, in my view, not worth the possible benefit when there are so many other good golf courses that exist in Alachua County. But my question is, does Alachua County really need more golf courses? Do we need more intensive development far from the urban core, distant from centers of commerce and the education that is so good to Gainesville? This property is invaluable, given the ecologically precious land and the unique habitat. So I encourage the commission to reject the plan to move forward. And I really appreciate the opportunity to provide, to talk about my concerns and I'll end there. Thanks so much for...
Thank you.
Madam Chair, if I could, there are some other callers on the line, but I want to remind them to press star nine on their phone to raise their hand if they want to speak.
Thank you. Thank you. Next speaker.
Hello, thank you so much. My name is Kayla Erlich and I am a third-year environmental science major at the University of Florida and I am also on the Alachua Audubon Board. And I will be reading the letter from Robert Simons, which you should have. I will be reading parts of it since a lot of it has been outlined already by the plan. So this is an open letter to the Alachua County Commission from the Board of the Alachua Audubon Society, representing its 1,000-plus members on the subject of the proposed development of the Lee property on the Hickory Sink strategic ecosystem. The values associated with the Hickory Sink strategic ecosystem as it exists on the Lee property include aquifer recharge, protection of the aquifer water quality, habitat for endangered species, habitat for many more common wildlife species and a potentially restorable upland longleaf pine ecosystem of a kind that has become imperiled. This last bit, the potential restoration of a now-rare upland longleaf pine ecosystem, is the most promising aspect of this property. The kind of upland longleaf pine forest that was once dominant over millions of acres in the coastal plain of the Carolinas, central and southwest Georgia, central Alabama and the Red Hills area of the Florida Panhandle and western Alachua and Marion Counties is now almost entirely gone due to the conversion into agricultural and to real estate development. This forest has had a unique set of species mixed in with the longleaf pine of the overstory and the wired grass of the ground cover, including southern red oak, mackerel hickory, post oak, chinquipin, poppy mallow and many others. The restoration of a large central area of the Hickory Sink strategic ecosystem on the west side of Parker Road to this forest type is possible and would provide a unique and valuable ecosystem that has become vanishingly scarce. The main qualifiers for accomplishing this area, that the area would need to be burned with prescribed fires on a frequent schedule and this commitment to management would need to be maintained for a long time into the future. Please do not weaken the staff recommendations and this letter is extremely conservative in its emphasis. I would also like to highlight that Audubon is not associated with National Audubon in any way on the presentation, if you noticed, about the golf course. That Audubon is not the Audubon that we represent. Audubon does not certify golf courses or any other development as being environmentally sound. Indeed, Audubon often opposes such development. Thank you so much and I appreciate your time.
Thank you. Welcome.
Hi, I have these letters. If you hadn't received them, I emailed.
All right. Thank you.
Give it to the clerk.
Hi, my name is Sarah Younger and I'm here today before you as the chair of the Sawani St. John's Group Sierra Club. The Sierra Club is our nation's largest and oldest grassroots environmental organization and on behalf of nearly 6,000 members and supporters, I am here to ask you to deny a current master planning scenario that was detailed in the study because there are many concerns that we have that are not addressed. First off, can we afford this, really? Can we afford it? Because what is actually the price tag for all the mitigation and monitoring that this project would now demand? Do we even have staff available to do that monitoring? Something that's not even mentioned in this study, how do you put a price tag on when city planners need to provide incentives for infill while the county is doling out rural and agricultural land to the tune of an entire township? You must consider how to prevent this next proposal, which would inevitably come once that comp plan is amended to handle this one. The comp plan was written with these provisions strongly outlined in the requirements to safeguard from this type of development outside of an urban boundary. Moving forward with a special area plan under the current master plan scenario, you are signaling that our comprehensive plan is entirely meaningless and that there is no compelling need to expand beyond this present urban cluster until past 2040. So also, question number two, how important are gopher tortoises' habitat to our north central Florida? The gopher tortoise is considered a keystone species and an indicator of longleaf pine ecosystem health. Cardinal reports that the property estimates to have 3,000 boroughs and over 1,500 tortoises. If the relocation site is deemed acceptable, that's potentially 700 to 1,000 gopher tortoises eventually relocated. This would amount to gopher tortoise genocide, to relocate these terrestrials into now a reservation that represents a fragmented fraction of the original present habitat. A mixed-use village is incompatible with the existing tortoise village as the request for significant human dwelling increase also means increased gopher tortoise borough density. Again, by the right scenario, will have more open space and opportunity for their survival. And do we really need a golf course developed on such significant wetland recharge? The special area study provides little information about how this golf course would be managed and is in a high aquifer recharge area. Any golf course would also need to be designed and operated to be protective of springs. However, it's unclear at this time whether the county will have jurisdiction to implement protection requirements within a UF-owned property. It has come to our attention recently, UF is not managing very well with their own tree canopy on the campus and it's not reassuring to think that you are embarking on this proposal by entrusting them with more oversight over such sensitive lands. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Sexton, do you have someone?
Madam Chair, we do have some folks listening in. I would remind them to hit star nine on your phone if you'd like to give public comment, but at the moment, no hands are raised, Madam Chair.
All right, thank you. Then we'll go right on with our community. Welcome.
Good evening, Chair, commissioners. My name is Kristen Rubin. I'm a board member of our Santa Fe River. OSFR wants to focus on Section 402.101D, land use analysis, which the SAS staff identifies three potential land use scenarios: no build, by right and master planning. In this study, the staff recommends a master planning scenario. OSFR does not. The no build scenario would protect a high recharge area. It would protect a large keystone gopher habitat. A no build would prevent exponential building at an uncontrollable rate with little regard to the preservation of the environment that Florida depends on. The no build scenario would follow the current comp plan for rural agricultural density, which in 2018, in evaluation of the urban cluster, states that capacity for growth is determined by population and that would take us to 2040. Therefore, no extension is needed until then. The by right scenario is to develop using the rural agricultural residential, which does not allow solar facilities or golf courses. In regards to solar, adding solar to all buildings in Alachua in Florida is a direction we should be heading. The by right identifies eight pods of 1,120 acres to build homes on five-acre lots. 1,886 acres for conservation and 860 acres for a solar facility that, under the current comp plan, would not be allowed. There is also the issue of septic and wells and sewage water infrastructure creates more urban sprawl in the by right scenario. It was brought up, there would also be minimal infrastructure, roads, limited sidewalks, which actually would decrease impervious spaces so more water can reach the Floridian aquifer, albeit stormwater. albeit stormwater. The master planning scenario is everything not needed nor beneficial to the health of Alachua, of Florida. We request that the Alachua Board follows the current comp plan and not allow this mixed-use golf course and residential development that once started, there will be no turning back. Thank you for this workshop and the opportunity to have this conversation.
All right. Next speaker. Come right on. Welcome.
Hi, welcome. My name is Natalie Volk. I'm the President of the Florida Biological Society. We represent caves and karst research in central Florida area, or north-central Florida. So, the special area study indicated that the cave resources that were, are the geological significant features on the property would be saved for habitat. We don't believe that the buffer zone of about like a hundred feet around these karst features, especially the ones that we call karst windows, which have water at the bottom, a direct linkage to the aquifer, are, is enough space for the habitat of these animals. When there isn't an adequate buffer, we can see significant pollution, both from human trash and runoff from nutrients and other surface pollution. So, if they actually want to preserve and save these habitats for the crayfish and endemic creatures there, adequate buffer zone needs to be given, and the conservation zones that are listed in both, are all the plans, all the proposed, the by right and the master plan, do not give enough adequate space, adequate conservation buffer. We would like you guys to please consider adding a larger buffer, especially around the ones that are karst windows that have water at the bottom, because those, we don't know how far below those caves go. It could be a large conduit that extends hundreds to thousands of feet below just from that karst window, so it can affect a lot. So, yeah.
Thank you, Natalie. I'm a spelunker myself.
Good evening. My name is Ryan Brullard. I've lived on the eleven acres neighboring the Lee property for over twenty years. I've worked as an organic farm inspector and certification agent for fifteen years, and I'm an avid gardener and homesteader. My house is currently surrounded by woods on all sides, but my neighbors just sold a hundred and fifty acres to developers. The Lee property is situated just to the north of me, which is where the proposed golf course would be. I have great respect and appreciation for the Lee family for holding onto and not developing their land for as long as they have. I also respect that they have property rights. However, I think that, with all things considered, this is an issue of quality versus quantity. The western side of Alachua County is getting developed at record pace. It's staggering to see how fast houses and condos are being built. The quality of life for those of us who live there is changing due to loss of privacy, increased traffic, noise, and light pollution. The Lee property has agricultural use that produces valuable food and timber and is a sanctuary for all kinds of wildlife, including large deer and turkey populations, fox, and even a very rare family of melanistic black bobcats that live on the edge of the proposed golf course area. It's also home to many people who live nearby and enjoy the feel of rural living without being, feeling like they have to live an hour away, who bought their land thinking that their urban cluster rule would prevent future overdevelopment. In my opinion, one, one house built would be too many, not because I'm against progress, but because the land already provides valuable function, but I know that's not realistic. The county development plan allows for one house per five acres. It will be a massive mistake to rezone this land, to pack and stack more houses just to increase the county tax base. This land has more than financial value to be gained from home development. It's semantics to say that a golf course is agriculture. We have a fragile food system and a supply chain issues. Mr. Lee is right, this is a great opportunity. I hope other side of the, I hope other outside-the-box options, such as regenerative agriculture, collaborations with IFIS, incubator farms for new farmers and local agribusinesses, agritourism, other eco, and other eco-recreational opportunities can be explored to give the Lees the deserved revenue from their land without having to overdevelop it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Brullard. All right. Go right ahead.
Thank you, Madam Commissioner. My name is David Moritz, and I'm Vice Chair of Alachua County Environmental Protection Advisory Committee. However, we haven't had a chance to discuss this subject yet in meeting, so I'm here speaking on my own behalf. First off, the, as far as I know, the staff did not recommend that you go to a master plan. They gave, saying that if you went to a master plan, here are the many conditions that we think you should look at before you approve of anything in that way. I support staff's recommendation. I do not, I do not support the, the building of a golf course at all. I think we don't need another one, as many people have said. I'd like to add my voice to theirs in that respect. They made it sound like it was going to be very nice, you know, protect the environment, but gee, I don't know whether I can trust them after the decision that UF made to go with, you know, natural gas for their, their new power plant. So, you know, they kind of lost me at that stage. So, we need to really seriously consider that part of anything that we go for. At the same time, as I look at this, I think there, there might be some advantages to going master plan. You guys have to be the ones to make that decision, and it needs to be made based upon how fast we, we think we're going to need to develop that area, okay, which I don't think is very fast at all. If we're not going to develop it very fast at all, then do we need a master plan? And the answer for that would be no. Yes, the master plan would allow us to cut down on having eight hundred and thirteen different septic systems, eight hundred and thirteen different wells, but if that's going to be thirty to fifty years in the future, it might never happen. In that period of time, we may very well get control of our, you know, out-of-control population growth, which is what's fueling this to begin with. We wouldn't need to be moving west and north and south and, you know, get to every piece of open land in the county if it wasn't for that. So, I think, you know, look at that before you, you know, you make that decision, but, you know, follow, look at all the decisions. Based upon that, I'm going to have to withhold my final judgment until I hear, you know, what you guys have decided to do, and what, you know, and in what way you're going to implement. I think there's just so many open paths to go, you know, that, that it bears, you know, waiting it out. Without, with one exception, and that's if you can purchase, find a way to purchase this land and put it into complete conservation, absolutely, that's the best way to go. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. All right, come right on, and then we'll get to the phones.
Thank you. I want to thank the staff for having this meeting and allowing me to appear before you again. As a member of the SPSCC, I've been here before. My name is Charles McGee. I live in Archer Forter, approximately four miles from the Hickory Sink study area. I know that the county officials are doing your job to the best of your ability. However, any developments of these lands is a concern for all of the people living in Alachua County, not just those within a quarter mile that were notified. The fact that very powerful people within our community are actively working very hard to manipulate our understanding to their favor and against the needs of the citizens of this county should be a criminal offense. A lie does not become truth. A wrong does not become right, and an evil does not become good just because it is accepted. These lands in question are in the high aquifer recharge zone. Any development of these lands will have a negative impact on the aquifer. The question isn't when will it happen, but how bad will it get? In twenty years, I do not want my children or grandchildren sitting around watching television and seeing a commercial that says, "If you lived in Alachua County between the years of 2024 and 2050 and drank the groundwater, you're entitled to a huge cash settlement. Call now."
Okay. Thank you.
The pollution caused in development does not just come from some simple source of putting fertilizer on your lawn or the septic tank. It comes from pesticides from people who don't want mosquitoes and spiders and lizards and palmetto bugs running around their yard. You can buy it at Home Depot, and it kills two hundred and thirty-three different species of insects, including monarchs. There's also the treatment of the foundation for termites. Every foundation that goes in is treated for termites with a poison so bad, it lasts for what, a hundred and fifty years? Four hundred acres of solar panels is not just a little solar acre area, it's a solar commercial industrial complex. This development will require improvements in infrastructure within the area so substantial that people like me who still live on a dirt road in thirty years will still be living on a dirt road. People like me that don't have cable in twenty years still won't have cable.
Thank you. Would you tell us your last name one more time? I interrupted you while you were trying to say it.
McGee.
Thank you, McGee. Mr. McGee, thank you. All right, and there's nobody on the phone? All right then. Welcome.
Hi, good afternoon. I'm Mary Alfred, and, and I had the pleasure of actually getting to sit down and meet with Mr. Dedenbach and Ms. Boyes about this project a couple of years ago, and I'll say that, you know, this, this is a really a model community for Alachua County, but not here, and not outside the urban boundary. You know, these are sensitive areas, and, you know, the citizens voted on what the urban boundary was, and we need to respect that. Mr. Dedenbach and the applicant also discussed the increase to traffic. I now live in Archer, and I experience Archer Road almost every day. I've been run off the road twice, and I believe with this increase in population out there, you'll, you'll have to work with the state to consider forelighting that road, and I know it's not something that you guys want to do, but it will be necessary. I'd also haven't heard any mention to connection to the Archer Braid Trail, and even though they do talk about multimodal transportation, and I would really like to see if UF supports this project for UF to support regional transit to the area. Cave systems are complex, and very, a whole lot of the cave system is never seen by human eyes, so we don't know what's there. We do know that endangered species do live and have been documented in this particular cave system twenty-something years ago. Are they where we can find them now? I don't know, but they're probably in the system somewhere. As an environmental engineer, I will say we don't have to worry about just runoff pollution to caves, it's infiltration also. The city of Tallahassee can talk to you a long time about what they did to Florida caverns with infiltration, and so the whole area of recharge will affect these cave systems. So, even if reclaimed water is used and herbicides and pesticides and fertilizers are limited on the golf course, those will reach the cave systems as well. I used to manage a four thousand acre site along the Suwannee River, and we had mature longleaf pines and many, many, many gopher tortoises on this site. I know from managing that site that those are indicator species of many other species of special concern, species that are likely present, such as the indigo snake, eastern diamondback rattlesnakes, Florida pine snakes, and the Sherman's fox squirrel. I haven't heard mention of, of these species, and if this does go forward, I would like to see a deed restriction prohibiting the use of natural gas or propane on site. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker. Come right on down.
Hi, good evening. My name is Pratibha Singh, and I speak as a common citizen. I live in this neighborhood, less than two hundred meters from where all this is happening, and I thank you for giving me this opportunity to say a few words today. I'm absolutely appalled at the idea of a golf course being called as some kind of an ecological development. The second point is, I live in the southwest from where this thing is going to happen. It takes forever for me to take the Twenty-Fourth Avenue or Twentieth Avenue and reach this part of town to work, especially with the new developments that have come up there. So, once this comes up, I don't know, maybe I need to buy a helicopter to get to work. The gopher tortoise is a keystone species, and the map did show a lot of them in the transit, relocating them. Is that an ecological practice? I urge you to really think about it. And lastly, you know, when I moved to this place eight years ago, I used to see red-headed woodpeckers in my area, you know, and they were fairly common, and from the last two years, after Oakmont and all those developments that have taken place there, I have not seen a single red-headed woodpecker in that area in the last two years. And I'm a pretty good board watcher, and I'm out every day. So, this is how, you know, one by one, the species, they vanish, and nobody notices that they vanish. So, I really urge you to think about this. I know you're doing your job, and that's why you have given us this opportunity to speak today. I support the staff recommendations, and they have made some good recommendations, but many of them are minimum conservation areas. I really urge the commissioners to go over and beyond these recommendations and do your best. We have only one home, this earth, you know, and all these areas that support this kind of wildlife is important. So, please do think about it very carefully. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. All right, next speaker. We're here.
Hello. Yes. Is this thing on?
Yes, it is.
Hi, thank you. Thank you for allowing for me to speak. My name is Susan Carr. I'm on the Board of the Florida Native Plant Society. We are a large membership-based organization of about five thousand members throughout the state. We have a large local chapter here, the Paines Prairie Chapter. The president is sitting right over there, Mark Elliott, and so, but I'm largely speaking on behalf of my own opinions here, but I think I represent much of the Florida Native Plant Society as well. I basically echo pretty much everything I've heard here from the public tonight, and I commend the staff. I think you've done a wonderful job, the analysis that you've presented, and I fully support the protections of the strategic ecosystem. In fact, if anything, I think the strategic eco, look, I've never even been on this land, but I think the strategic ecosystem has been underestimated. You know, some of the data are old, and everything I've heard about the longleaf pine and the even rarer upland longleaf hardwood-type communities out there, we know those are exceptionally species diverse. In fact, they are at small scales, I studied this for my graduate work, so, at small scales, they are the most diverse ecosystems in the world. Okay, so that's what we're dealing with. So, when I saw that species diversity low, I'm like, uh-uh, no. So, but anyhow, this bears out, you know, all the other stuff. We have rare critters, gopher tortoises, of course. At least two state-endangered plants that were mentioned tonight, and probably more. State endangered, you know, the, this woodland poppy mallow, this is the only place in the world it occurs, right in here. Pretty, you know, pretty rare. So, to echo some of the stuff, I support the staff recommendations. I fully support the provisions of the comprehensive plan. We have a comprehensive plan for this very reason, you know, why, why upend it? And I fully support maybe invest, if it's at all possible, or even, you know, the family themselves could think about other conservation options that would, you know, maybe involve conservation partnerships, federal or state funding opportunities. There are many out there, it may take a little time, but they are out there, I think. And I think that's, I think the, I think the idea of putting a golf course out there, University of Flori, I'm a Florida Gator myself, but I think the idea of putting a golf course out there is just not a good idea. Of course, it is antithetical to native plants and native plant communities, and I'll end right there. Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, next speaker.
Good evening. My name is David McSherry. I live in southwest Alachua County.
David, go ahead and lift that mic so you don't have to—
Okay. Did you hear my name and everything?
I sure did. Thank you.
My first order of business here is to help this study get better. The staff has done a terrific job, but there's one stipulation in the rule— The staff has done a terrific job, but there's one stipulation in the rule that says, basic information concerning all properties within and immediately abutting the strategic ecosystem or systems or other planning area, including the acreage, current use, and owners. This has to be done and there has not been any work done at all on evaluating the abutting properties. Now, okay, I'm feathering my own nest a little. We share three-quarters of a mile of border with the Lee family property. We have the wetland that's been identified, which is on the national registry. We have half of it, they have half of it. We also have a wetland off the extreme southwest corner of their property on our property when in wet seasons it goes all the way up to their property. And there's cypress in there regenerating, things are happening in that one as well. The one we share with them, we have twenty-five-year-old cypress that really looks terrific. Secondly, any new information that is brought up either through staff expanding the study to the abutting areas, and that's just not our farm, but all around, because there's some interesting questions. All the surface water, the superficial aquifers and the aquifer, they're all connected in these kind of geologies. There's no difference, really. So this has to be taken very seriously. And in our part where we have all these wetlands, the border, the boundary is what, two hundred feet or something, their buffer, that's not adequate at all to protect those. And there's actually no plan going on on that west side, you know? Doesn't show up on any of the maps in any way, shape, or form. So, and then also we want to support the staff recommendation of the minimum, whatever it was, and that to me is the most logical way to proceed here. And then lastly, starting in nineteen eighty-five, when the comprehensive plan law came into being, December and I have participated intensely for two decades, less than the last fifteen years, because it kind of reached a stasis of, I thought, being a very, very good plan, except for minor times when we would intervene. But that represented in this community, tens of thousands of hours of citizen participation in public meetings, submitting facts and testimony for the record, writing or verbally, as we did. And over the years, a million compromises, a million bits of evolution, better science, better engineering came, and we finally have reached, I think, a plan, I believe, that represents the intent and the will of the people of Alachua County. And I'm saying right now, stand by our plan.
Thank you, thank you. Thank you, Mr. McSherry. Thank you for coming.
Thank you, sir, thank you.
Okay. Madam Chair, Armando Grundy Gomez, resident of East Gainesville. So a couple of things that I haven't heard, we've heard from a friend and colleague, David Hastings, who I was hoping he would have told you what exactly he did. He's a climate oceanographer. And number one, what's important is I know two of you up there running for office now are really big on protecting water, really big on protecting the environment. Man, you all will, like I said, and I've always said, and I say it facetiously, you all will care about dandelions, roaches, and rats more than human beings. But in this case, we're going to talk about the facts of what is important here. As a member of the Sierra Club, what I haven't heard from some of my friends and colleagues and that is that we're talking about a golf course. And here's not a throwaway statement, we're talking about the history of the sink, we're talking about this bio, this, and this critter, that, but where's another important thing that not one person up here has said today? So I'm going to put it, I said, you all care about water. Tell me, I think we added up everybody's age in this room, it wouldn't add to how much arsenic will stay in the soil when they put up their nice new little golf course. Because you can go throughout any golf course in the state of Florida, promise you, you will find arsenic. I challenge anybody in this room. And if you want to know how long it stays in the soil, since I know some of us, they don't think some of us are supposed to be so smart, and I want to speak to Mr. Lane's point here shortly, because he brought up, you know, that nice little throwaway line, and I have a tremendous amount of respect for Mr. Lane, is that nine thousand years is the number that arsenic will stay in the soil. And I guarantee you, I don't think we'll get to nine thousand years, we add up every age in this room as how long it'll stay in the soil. I could be wrong. I'm not going to sit here and count and predict of whose age is what, but promise you it won't get to nine thousand years. And if that is the, if we're willing to want to bet because we get a quote-unquote gift from the University of Florida, that that's what we want to do is put arsenic in the soil, then have at it. Have at it. Because it's not there now, but that's what we want to do, that's interesting. So the other thing that I want to talk about is what, Mr. Morgan talked about it briefly and he kind of just glazed over it, and the person that spoke before him kind of glazed over it, the gentleman Bobby from the graduates at the University of Florida. What I always find interesting is when people use these nice little lines, well, we're going to do it because people of color are going to play golf. Yippee-ya-ke-yay! And, you know, I find it interesting because it was almost a throwaway line. You know, we're going to have Tiger Woods coming out of East Gainesville. We're going to those East Gainesville schools and Hawthorne to teach the little children of color to play golf. We know that that's not going to happen. I like Mr. Lane, but that is what we call performative equity, performative diversity. It's a throwaway line. It's kind of like, well, look, just as much as, and just, I'm not going to get on just UF, just as much as y'all like to talk about, we're going to put up solar. Boys and girls, we're going to put up five thousand solar panels because we hate natural gas to make it feel good, so we're going to build them today. Not talking about how many fossil fuels it takes to build one of those things, but we're acting like we're doing something. Come on, folks, let's stop the madness. If it's not good for Alachua County, it's not good for Alachua County, but let's not say it's natural gas, and let's not say it's those things. Stop the madness.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Madam Chair, we do have a caller.
All right, if you don't mind, we'll go there.
Caller ending in telephone number two-five-six-seven. If you will hit star six, you can come into the room. Caller ending in two-five-six-seven. You're in the room, you have three minutes. Please state your name.
My name is Meg Meterhofer and I'm speaking on behalf of Women for Wise Growth. Our members are following this project and we are very concerned about many of the things other speakers are calling your attention to. And, well, something seems to be going wrong with my phone, so I'm just going to sign up. We're paying attention. Do your best.
Thank you.
And, and Madam Chair, just so we know if there's any confusion, we have a caller ending in six-five-eight-four and a caller ending in eight-zero-eight-four. If you would like to speak, you need to press star nine.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Good evening, Nancy Darren. I want to thank staff for their hard work that they did and also give my deep thanks to the Lee family for caring for these precious lands all these years. When I saw that map, it's even more important to keep this as a critical part of our Emerald Necklace on the west side and not fill in a very critical last open stretch. And I would beg the Lee family to look for conservation opportunities. We have a carefully crafted, effective, comprehensive plan that maps out the importance of our well-defined urban services boundary, the integrity of our plan and ability to protect our aquifer, our water quality and quantity, and ability to deal with the myriad of demands of even more human development is at stake. Protecting green spaces, aquifer, and recharge areas and encouraging conservation and agro-ecological practices on remaining open lands is vital. We must hold firm to our urban cluster boundaries and requirements. Our existing plan has enough, is already designed to accommodate growth in the urban cluster till at least 2040. I urge you to reject the applicant's proposal to breach that urban cluster, especially for this mixed-use village land use, and focus on discussing staff observations and recommendations. The applicant has not demonstrated any need that would justify setting a precedent, radically changing our comprehensive plan, extending urban use and services outside the current urban cluster, and encouraging dramatic increase in density on a property that has this strategic ecosystem, high aquifer recharge, and sensitive car stereo. The applicant has a variety of options by right under the existing plan and adhere to lower impact design strategies listed out by staff. As they note, this property has a high importance for aquifer recharge and high vulnerability for the aquifer. Protecting groundwater from pollutants and retaining open space for recharge should be a major consideration for any future use. Water is fundamental for every living organism on earth. We have to face the fact there is a carrying capacity for our area and our ecosystem. Accepting this plan to violate the current cluster would increase the amount of overshoot of the carrying capacity of our water, aquifer, open lands, food production, sets us up for floods, pollution, and huge economic and health expenses we cannot bear. Humanity's facing a multiple cascading series of ecological crises. This, we have crossed six of the nine planetary boundary safe zones, and in April, they announced we've transgressed freshwater planetary boundary. Our water is over the line.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Darren. All right, next speaker.
Hi, my name's Ashley Ikas. I'm a community member and a student at UF.
And I, Ashley Gess?
Ikas.
Ikas, pretty, all right.
Okay. I agree with the previous speakers that we should stick with the original plan, but I also just wanted to specifically mention two points in the applicant's proposal or slideshow that seemed contradictory. They were saying that there were going to be eight, eight-hundred-and-thirteen wells and septic tanks put in with the one-to-five building, but they didn't mention, like making it seem like it was going to help improve water quality, but they didn't mention the impacts of a golf course. And then also, when they talked about a recreational green space for the community that the golf course would be, they didn't mention the fact that there's usually a paywall with golf courses and it wouldn't be able to reach community members of lower income. That's what I wanted to mention.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for your thoughts. All right, next speaker.
Hello, my name's Tyler Forrest. I'm just here as a citizen. I'm a Alachua County resident. I guess like the poppy mallow, I am too endemic to Alachua County. Given, I'm really encouraged to hear that UF has, is wanting to partner on this property, I have a suggestion. I think they should just buy the entire property and then they could preserve it and they could use the entire property as their classroom. They were saying they wanted to make sure they had future laboratories for IFIS. This would ensure that for generations to come while preserving it. Everybody's happy, the Lee family is able to protect their property rights and UF gets a wonderful piece of property and it's protected in perpetuity. Hope you guys make the right choice. Thanks.
Thank you. Welcome.
Good evening. I'm Roberta Gastmeyer. The applicant argues that the previous development has brought urbanization to the edge of their property and this has made it more difficult to manage. With this reasoning, each new development on the edge of the urban cluster boundary becomes an argument to support the expansion of the boundary. So, you know, where, it was just going to perpetuate, perpetuate the disastrous business-as-usual approach that we've been taking to our environmental management. This essentially urbanizes, you know, all of Alachua County. Where do we hold the line? So the, as Mr. McSherry said, the Alachua County Comprehensive Plan is a product of many years of public hearings, committee deliberations, and legal challenges. It provides a carefully considered blueprint for future growth in the unincorporated areas of our county. It balances the public interest with the rights of property owners by directing growth to appropriate areas and protecting the public health, neighborhoods, farms, wetlands, and significant natural areas. The comp plan is meant to shape growth and development rather than to be shaped by those items. This proposed development would require extensive changes to the comp plan. According to staff, the study's land use recommendations would have far-reaching implications for other goals, objectives, and policies throughout the adopted comprehensive plan. And I am asking you please to make every possible effort to preserve this critical land to the greatest extent possible and to maintain the rural and agricultural character as specified in our current comp plan. Thank you.
Thank you. Great, next speaker.
Hi, good evening. My name is Janice Gary and I thank you so much for welcoming me this evening and welcoming also all of us for this really important conversation. In our bountiful lives, there are so many things that we can do without. One that we cannot do without is water. And the fact that our population is increasing and we know it will continue to increase, the fact that we are going to be getting climate migrants enforces the concept that we need to protect our water. We can choose where to put a home. We cannot choose where to put a aquifer recharge area. We have seen examples all over this country of cities that and counties and communities that have not protected their water adequately and they now have a population that is poisoned. There is absolutely no way to glossy coat a development over a aquifer recharge area and say that there's not going to be harm. It cannot be done. And the golf course is just the frosting on the cake, as everybody is pointing out. I would love to see a collaborative effort of various funding sources and the Lee family that has such a deep history here. A noble legacy, a legacy that truly would help this community, would be to make this a conservation area. We need to learn that our health and welfare depends on the health and welfare of red-headed woodpeckers and gopher tortoises and trees and the multitude of other species that we share this planet with. Our health and welfare depends on the flora and fauna as well. Let's reject this, let's go back to the table, and let's see if we can collaborate on a way to make this a true gem of Alachua County, not another pretty housing development. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Next speaker. Good evening.
Good evening. Good evening, thank you, Madam Chair. Anthony Johnson. Madam Chair, I came to listen to the citizens as well. I brought these issues before the board numerous times and it's good, it's refreshing to hear now the public reaffirm a lot of the things that I've thought were problems that needed to be addressed. And I, and you've heard it yourself now from the public, a lot of the things that I know that we need to correct here, especially when it comes to the comprehensive plan and when it comes to our mobility plan. I heard in the presentation by the applicant, a lot of the buzzwords that I know carry a lot of weight in this chamber. You know, things like multimodal transportation and strategic ecosystem and model for the state, things like that. I know those carry a lot of weight here. And I want to say that in terms of the monies and the strategic ecosystem, we've spent just this year alone, some almost thirty million dollars, I would think, twenty-five or thirty million dollars on land that I thought was questionable purchases. I know that the scoring that we go by to determine whether it's a strategic ecosystem or not is something that judge what will be bought by the county through the Wild Spaces Public Places tax money. But some of the land that was purchased out by Lockaloose Preserve and the Fox Pen Connector, those lands were not as valuable as what you're talking about here tonight. Okay, we, so I won't say I told you so, but those monies could have been spent to preserve this entire area. I think a lot of people here doesn't even know where Fox Pen Connector is, but you spent twenty million dollars on it. So, things like that. Madam Chair, in terms of the urban cluster and the expanding it, you know me personally, how I feel about the urban cluster, I've made it known. And I think that because of the way we manage the urban cluster, we add a disadvantage in our roads budget. We just don't have the road network to support it in its current form and to expand it now without any type of true discussion on whether this is something that is sustainable. I think we should be distributing the growth in the county more equally. I'm running for county commission. All these things are part of my plank. I've talked about them endlessly before this board. And I think tonight, a lot of the people came out to confirm some of the things you've heard me say. And I just hope that you would now consider.
Thank you, thank you.
Who I am and what I stand for.
Thank you, sir. Good evening.
Good evening, Tamara Robbins. So my initial question, I'm just going to throw it out there, is is it an option at this point to expand? this point to expand the scope of the study? In 2001, excuse me, 2020, CHW presented a letter that they had submitted a scope of a study to the Board of County Commissioners. The county commission approved that scope of the study for this area plan and it was on your consent agenda. I don't know if you all know that, it's another consent agenda item that according to the staff report today, it says that the special area study scope must be presented to the Board of County Commissioners. That did not happen. It was put on your consent agenda and it was voted on with no presentation, no scrutinizing. This, this study should have included the adjacent land study, it should have included the study of the actual sink itself and the ecosystem that exists in it, right? It should have included more study on the importance of gopher tortoises, you know, they actually support 350 species, a gopher tortoise burrow does. So, it's not just a turtle or a tortoise, okay? And so, I'm really upset by the fact that also in CHW's letter, they said they had met with all but one of the county commissioners. Now, this excludes Commissioner Easle, Glenn, and Prizia, you are not on the board. I'm here to ask you to stop doing that. Stop meeting privately with the developers, okay? You have questions for the developers, tell them to meet you in this public arena where we can all hear the questions and hear their answers, okay? Because I know you do it, I know they spend a lot of time in this building and they meet with staff and they meet with you and I appreciate it if you would stop doing that and bring the public business into this forum for the public to witness. This is the first time you've heard anybody in the public speak to you on this issue after over two years. Why? Because it was all being done in that back room. So, stop doing that, please. The cave system, you know, up there in Latchua where Walmart wanted to build the store, the cave divers came down, the Biological Society brought studies. There are numerous endangered species that live in those cave systems that nobody even knows. There's little shrimps and stuff that only live, only in the cave systems in the state of Florida in this area. So, the scope of the study should be expanded to include a more diverse study. This study is not good enough. So, you want to speak to the study? I don't care about a stupid golf course. This study did not cover what it needed to cover to do justice to this beautiful property. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir. Good evening.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Charlie Jackson. Thank you for giving me an opportunity. I just want to say a couple of things. Again, here we go again with a near-term decision that the commission is asking to make without thinking through a long-term impact. You heard from the citizens tonight talk about this environmental situation. Haven't heard anything yet that said it will be protecting our environment. Ms. Robbins who talked about the gopher turtle a few minutes ago, I can tell you that there, I've, I've been accustomed to seeing red-headed peckers as well. Haven't seen one in the last five years. We got deers running in West County throughout the daylight getting ran over. So, it is having an impact on our environment. Anytime you talk about water, let's talk about Jackson, Mississippi, right? Let's talk about Flint, Michigan, right? There are places where our folks who were elected to office failed to ensure that the environment in those major cities were looked out for. Again, tonight, I'm asking you, the board, to think through the decision that you've got to make. I do not believe you've heard a compelling case either side, staff or UF side, that our environment will be safe no matter what decision you make tonight. So, I'm asking you once again, think through it, have staff to do more work, bring everybody to the table, collaborate, and answer all of the questions that may be affecting our future children in this county. I love this county, I'm going nowhere and I definitely want to see we make the right decision.
Thank you, sir. All right, next speaker. Welcome.
May the meditations of my heart and the words of my mouth be accessible in your sight. Ja. Okay, thank you relatives, hakos, nikki, kasoniwa. That means greetings relatives in my Blackfoot way. I would like to first thank especially Mary Helen Wheeler for being hardcore about this and Anna Prizia about being hardcore on this. I am calling all of you commissioners and I am thanking you as a woman from the nation of Blackfoot. Raimi Eagle, this is in your bloodline. This is your blood. This is not politics. This is your blood. So, I'm calling you out as a sister. This is your blood. And I'm calling secondly, as somebody that is a part, a member of the National Audubon Society, a member of the Headwaters Action Video Collective, a member and chair and executive director of the LaKesh Foundation, and a member of the Rainforest Action Network, and I got permission to speak to this. I have never seen anything like this in my life. As somebody that has been on the front lines my whole life because it's in my blood as a BIPOC woman, indigenous woman, we don't want a golf course, we don't want spin doctors, we don't want FPL, Florida Pirates of Land. What we want is a home at Akwiyasan, all my relations. All my relations means everything from the little worm to the mycelium to the eagle, everything. That is how we walk. We are not caretakers, we are not caregivers. We are guardians of this unchi maka, pachamama. That is where we're at. Secondly, in respect for the relatives that walked here before me, the Miwok people, Alachua people, do you know where you're at? This is that land. Blood was shed here. No more blood needs to be shed. Secondly, I want to speak to the Migratory Bird Act and the Endangered Species Act. As a member of the National Audubon Society, I participate in the bird count and I am constantly watching birds and I am constantly doing the eagle count every year and the osprey count. I have been to this land. There is gopher tortoises, there is yellowtail, there is kite, there is wobbler, there is swallowtail. These birds come from far away to nest here. There's red sandhill cranes that we cannot relocate. I looked at the EIS, out west, we do a habitat conservation plan, not this little proposal thing. We have something called buffer zones. Your 4,068 acres is going to affect the next seven generations. Why don't we leave a legacy? I implore the Lee family to turn this into conservation. I vote no to this proposal. I ask the commissioners to vote with your hearts, to vote for the next seven generations for your children, for your grandchildren, and for those yet unborn. And I also want to say, we cannot relocate 700 tortoises and we cannot relocate sandhill cranes. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next speaker, please. Good evening.
Good evening, good evening. Jesse Moses. Good evening, commissioners. I am a resident of Alachua County and I'm also a resident that stays near on the western edge of the area they are talking about and I would like to see that preserved. I'm also a member of the St. Peter, St. Paul Community Council and we're also against what we're seeing on the map, which we've been fighting against is the solar energy plants. We see on the western edge where I live at, there where they're proposing to put the solar plant system, that's 800 acres. It's one of the last of the areas out there west of Gainesville that is unincorporated and that is a rural area. It is home to a lot of different species. We're talking about the tortoises, but we're talking about turkeys, wild turkeys, we're talking about deer and those sorts of animals that we find deer that I love seeing in the morning time when I come out my door. And we don't want to see that area being infringed upon, which will do in terms of when you develop that area in the, all of the western part of the Latchua County. They are saying they're not going to develop that and they're going to protect this, but it's just leading right into a more mass development that's going to come right on down Parker Road and it's going to create, what we already got is traffic flow, congestion, coming to work in the morning time on a two-way road, Latchua Road is just going to be impacted as well as the Parker Road, going to be a very big impact in terms of the traffic that we're going to see and the impact that it's going to have on Latchua County. So, I would impair that the council, the commission vote no on this proposal. Thank you so much.
Mr. Moses, anyone else who would like to speak? Anyone else? Good evening. Good evening, Dr. Rutledge.
Good evening, Madam Chair and Commissioners. My name is Michelle Rutledge. My home is in Archer, Florida, specifically the historically African-American rural neighborhoods intact since prior to SAVRE ending. I request you deny this area study. I would like to add an environmental justice perspective to this discussion. Some principles are people first, process, and policy. People first, both the Pinesville and St. Peter neighborhoods of Archer were settled by freedmen from the Cottonwood Plantation and other nearby plantations. Many of us are their descendants still in the areas, like my neighbors and I, that some of us are here today. There is rich history in the area. Pinesville Cemetery, Pinesville Church, the St. Peter Cemetery has an upcoming Florida Historical Marker dedication on next month. We would like our home of unincorporated Pinesville and St. Peter to be in existence 70 to 100 years also. It is important to preserve this culture, our heritage, and consider African-American history as valuable American history. In an email on August 17, 2021, the county staff suggested an additional stakeholder list which included St. Peter, St. Paul Community Council. However, we were not informed of the previous meetings in the Springs. Meaningful engagement is important. Also in the maps, the proposed utility solar is located about three-fourths mile from a previously denied 600-acre utility-scale solar in our neighborhoods. The location of the proposed solar facility impacts the same neighborhoods from 2020. This information is missing from the reports. This will be the third proposed utility-scale solar in Archer since 2020 in general. Specifically, this will be the second utility-scale solar in our Pinesville-St. Peter neighborhoods. We request as best practice, the proposed utility-scale solar is moved away from our Pinesville and St. Peter rural residential neighborhoods. Policy, we as St. Peter-St. Paul Community Council have been advocating for a community-led energy development process. We would like not citing of solar power plants as best practice such as protecting near, or I guess, don't cite power plants near previously denied locations. They have impacts. But, just to conclude, hold the line, protect our rural quality of life, protect our water, protect our history, heritage, and culture. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Rutledge. Anyone else like to speak tonight? All right, and we don't have anyone else on the phone, so we can turn it over to the commission? All right then, thank you. Then we'll close citizen comment and bring it back to the board. Let's see if I can, yes. All right.
Okay, let me start. So, first of all, thank, thanks everyone for coming out. This was a very good workshop where we got to hear from a lot of folks, many of which we haven't heard from in a while and it's great to see some familiar faces, some we hear from an awful lot. So, thank you for that. I just have a handful of questions, mostly for our staff, and it relates to the staff report. Ben, could you pull that up on the screen? Because I do want to just kind of understand some of the points that you made in the staff So, page nine, Ben. You talk about, in the staff report, it talks about, I guess, those bottom acres, 308 acres, old field pine plantation and improved pasture. Where exactly is that located on the map? I'm sorry, Ben, Steve, yeah?
Good evening, against the host there. That, that area has actually modified over time and moved.
This will explain why it's not an easy answer. Okay, this is a 2017 aerial of the property and the, again, the kind of shaded blue area is the strategic ecosystem. When the report was done in 1996, it looked a little more like this. Now, one thing I will point out is a lot of it has remained the same. However, there are areas that have slightly changed in terms of where that oak pine plantation or the old field pine plantation and improved pasture areas are. This may give you a better idea of where they are. The improved pasture is actually not on this property. I believe represented by the Flint Rock parcel in between the two.
Oh, gotcha.
That, that light shaded area, that's a good indicator of improved pasture when you look at an aerial and that's the area of improved pasture. The pine plantation, I believe are in two spots. Here and here. And again, those are no longer the current places for that. So, if you look more at the current, now you can see that, and that's one of the reasons why we've removed those areas under the current ground truth evaluation and strategic ecosystem, that large area to the north in the dark green, that's dense pine plantation now.
And you're showing that as only 200 acres?
No, that we put, that's the original 1996 classifications. So, that, that's, your question is a good one because it leads to why the current ground truthing has modified the areas that we are currently classifying as within the strategic ecosystem. So, the area to the north in the dark green, that area which I think is around 400, 500 acres, as well as about 100 acre piece down in the bottom corner is, is outside of what we've currently identified as the ground truth strategic ecosystem.
And that area to the north, if I remember your topography map, that's the highest round and then as it goes south on the map, it then flows closer to the, closer to the, the topography goes closer to the aquifer.
Madam Chair, that's correct. In general, the lowest points, again, it's a little hard for people to hear, let me try this. The lowest points kind of flow through here and across the property. So, you know, this is a relatively low area, which is why Flint Rock has a stormwater system here and the majority of the sink features are in a lower area here. This is the higher ground area.
Okay, so, back to the staff report, I'm going to ask you a question that I know you can't answer. So, in, in, on page nine, if we could flip back over to that, we talk about how the condition of the bio-community and the first two say poor, poor, good to fair, good to good. Do you have a sense of how this might score with the LCV, Land Conservation Board?
The Land Conservation Board did score it.
Oh, they did score.
And there, it's in the backup. I, I can't tell you what the number scoring was without going back over there, but it is in the backup material, I believe. It's, yeah, seven something.
Okay, seven plus. Okay, that's a good number. Okay, thank you. Okay, on page 13, we talk about really the process of what would be entailed with relocating gopher tortoises. And I guess my question would be, how would that relocation be handled under, say, the existing regulations which allow for rural clustering? How would the applicant, if they did a rural clustered neighborhood, be required to relocate those? Would they be the same?
Any area that's left as common area or open space that's not physically altered would be able to retain those tortoises. Any areas that are going to be within 20, 25 feet of any impact, like a road, a home, house, would have to relocate those tortoises. Obviously, if the density of the law- Obviously, if the density of the lots are small, the tortoises would have to be completely removed from those areas. If we're on larger lots of, of over an acre, you could retain tortoises on those lots. Again, we want to be careful, you know, how that would be done, but that is a possibility. And, and I just want to state, you know, the, the, the Florida Fish and Wildlife Service, Conservation Commission are the regulators of the gopher tortoise animals themselves. They would make the determination of what tortoises would have to be moved or, or left, or could be left in place.
Okay.
They're territorial too, aren't they? What it, what, sorry, go ahead.
Just a quick follow-up question on that, Madam Chair. Does, would a solar panel, solar array development be considered development that FWC would regulate in terms of gopher tortoise habitat?
Madam Chair, I've inquired with them on that. I've not got a response. I would, my assumption is yes, they would have to evaluate what impacts are going to occur to those tortoises. And if they were probably within twenty feet of any placement posts, filling of material, anything like that, they would have to be relocated. But I've inquired about that, and I should have a very clear answer at our next meeting.
Okay, thank you.
Moving on to page seventeen, Steve, we start talking about the nitrogen with regards to the existing septic tanks. And I tried to do some math, and I'm pretty good at math, but I couldn't really follow this math in your staff report. So I just want to ask you kind of from a macro sense. As I understand it, eight hundred, and it's on, it's at the top of page seventeen, eighteen hundred traditional septic tanks would result in an estimated eighty-two hundred and forty pounds of total nitrogen per year. But then you go on to say that because it's in a strategic ecosystem, it would require to do nutrient-reducing systems, which would lower that impact down to twenty-eight, eighty pounds per year. That's under the current, based on the, based on the current comp plan. But then you say that if this were connected to centralized sewer, that nitrogen load would be reduced to two thousand pounds per year, which would be the best-case scenario.
Madam Chair, that's based on four thousand units.
Four thousand units.
Not the eight hundred. So that's something to, to remember. We're, we're talking about very different densities.
Right, so with eight hundred units, you would have more pounds of nitrogen than if you had four thousand units connected to sewer? Is that the?
Just referring to the amount of nitrogen based on septic, you know, sewer and septicage, yes.
Okay, so, so how do you account for all of the other nutrients associated with development that we've heard from tonight from so many people?
That, that is not in the numbers here, so, you know, nutrients from fertilizer, animal waste, other, you know, whatever, other things we're doing on the landscape, we've not incorporated those numbers into this. That, that can get extremely complicated. We could.
Maybe that's where you lost me then.
And, and I do have my Water Resources Program Manager here. She could probably do a better job of talking about those details.
Stacy, I mean, do we have any idea how you would approach that? Well, I mean, we have other developments that are nearby. We have.
Stacy Greco, Environmental Protection Water Resources Program Manager. I mean, it would, it would all depend on the lots, and your other big source would be residential fertilizer. So if you're, if you're going to develop four thousand lots instead of eight hundred, you're likely going to have more managed landscapes, because with a five-acre lot, people aren't going to have that be five acres of irrigated turf that's also fertilized. So I think that, you know, we could run some back-of-the-envelope calculations to try to include, you know, what would that look like from the landscapes? This was just looking at the septic systems versus wastewater. But also, we'd have to look at, go ahead.
Your seventh condition, I guess, is the way that you are essentially trying to address this with nutrient management practices such as but not limited, and then you go on to prohibiting landscape fertilizer, minimizing clearing of vegetation, prohibiting irrigated private residence. So six and seven are a way to attempt to address that.
Yes.
Okay. Okay, this is one for staff that I don't know how to really ask this other than to read it. So on page eighteen, it's really the last sentence. Let me, let me just read the paragraph. "The project also falls within the Santa Fe River B map, which addresses future non-agricultural growth through the development and implementation of county codes based on House Bill nine sixty-seven, which was passed during the past legislative session." Thank you, Tallahassee. "Staff that manage a golf course and have obtained a UFIPIS golf course best management practice certification are exempt from local ordinances related to water and fertilizer." So then it says, "The bill does not exempt the management entity from having to comply with rules and requirements." But your last sentence says, "It's unclear at this time whether the county will have jurisdiction to implement protection requirements within a UF-owned property. Nevertheless, staff recommends that protection strategies be identified as part of SAP." So, I mean, I don't want to put UF on the, on the spot here, because they're just, whether we want a bit of golf course. But how would that, how would we have any jurisdiction over our UF golf course? Or would we?
Madam Chair, Steve Hofstadter again. May have the attorney chime in, but one, one scenario is that as we're working through this, those conditions get placed and are put in, you know, kind of some kind of permanent instrument prior to moving forward with that golf course. I bet, I don't know, there may be options or scenarios that, that could play out that way.
So you have a couple of issues at play here. One is the preemption that you read, which would limit our regulatory authority. Another is whether the golf course property would become part of the campus master plan, which then allows UF to develop, consistent with that campus master plan, and removes the county from any of those considerations. I think what we talked about in some of this language is the idea of some sort of permanent protective instrument. So we're not regulating the activity. Instead, we have a property interest, either a deed restriction, conservation easement, something that we can hold UF to a standard that we've identified. We haven't identified it at this stage, but it's a way to get around the regulatory issues.
Again, this goes back to the potential collaborative process of if we're going to work together, they come and we work together on developing those standards if they move forward with something like this, which is kind of outside the regulatory, because it's by agreement. Is that the idea?
Potentially could be. And as far as those property interests go, with the permanent protective instruments, we usually have things like management plans where we have standards that we can enforce as a, through our property interests.
Okay, let me ask about golf courses just by right. Under Rural Ag, what is a right? Can, can anyone do a golf course?
Madam Chair, yes, it is a right in the Rural Ag area. We do have standards in place in our code that apply to golf courses. I believe that's in our backup material as well.
Okay, all right, finally to Ben. This, and then I'll stop for a minute and let my colleagues go. So I was here, so this is on the bottom of page twenty-seven, Ben. I'll just read the paragraph. "The county's most recent evaluation of the urban cluster was conducted in two thousand and eighteen as part of the periodic EAR evaluation and appraisal of the comprehensive plan required by Chapter one sixty-three. That evaluation indicated there was sufficient land within the adopted urban cluster boundary to accommodate future urban development based on the county's projected population growth with the year two thousand and forty." We heard Ms. Boyce speak to what we're actually seeing on the ground, which is seventeen developments in Newberry, two thousand planned in High Springs. Really unprecedented growth in the state of Florida. Does staff still stand by that statement from two thousand and eighteen? Or has there been any recent analysis in the last three years that would change that?
Madam Chair, the analysis that was done in that two thousand and eighteen, two thousand and nineteen timeframe, that is the most recent analysis that, that staff has done of the urban cluster's capacity. We do stand by that analysis, but we also recognize that every, around seven years, we do a, an overall evaluation and update of the comprehensive plan. And as part of that, we, we will do another evaluation of the urban cluster's capacity. I will say that the, the population projections that were used in two thousand and eighteen, the, the current projections are, are now higher than the population projections that were used in two thousand and eighteen.
Okay, a couple of questions based on the excellent comments from our public. Thank you all. I, I like to always say, if I'm the smartest one in the room, I'm in the wrong room. And I'm definitely not in the wrong room. You all brought a lot of great points up today. Mr. McSherry brought up this idea about expanding the study to abutting properties. Is it, how does our code speak, does our code speak to that? Because I wasn't aware of that.
I'm sorry, could you repeat that, expanding?
Expanding the special area study to include abutting properties. Is there anything in our code that speaks to that? I wasn't aware of that.
I, Madam Chair, I mean, I, I think, I mean, the study could.
He's not walking up behind you.
That's the rule.
Madam Chair, Steve Hofstadter. Yeah, what Mr. McSherry brought up was the planning parcel concept. And, and there is an ability to expand a study, to look into areas that seem to have some connectivity to the strategic ecosystem. I just want to be clear, you can't expand the boundary of the strategic ecosystem. So you can, you can add additional areas that you'd like to inquire about or investigate, but it would not expand the boundary. In fact, we did do that with the Pine Hill, oh, excuse me, not Pine Hill, Pines Prairie West Strategic Ecosystem, which was the one study that, that staff initiated several years ago. And we did expand to look at another area that we thought had an important connection to the strategic ecosystem. So it can be done, but I just want to make it clear that it doesn't mean you're expanding the strategic ecosystem boundary. You're just inquiring and investigating other areas that surround that property.
Okay, thank you. Also, you had spoken about, Ms. Bolt, Natalie Bolt spoke about hundred-foot buffer zones on specific, specific resources. Did you mention that you, that you, staff was recommending a five-acre buffer around specific resources? Or did I miss hear that?
Madam Chair, you're, you're correct. We, we require at least a hundred and fifty for all geologic features, features that have a connection to the aquifer. We're, hundred and fifty feet, but we're actually recommending five-acre buffers on those two, at least those two isolated, very sensitive features. And so we'll, we'll verify, but we should be beyond that hundred feet for sure.
Okay, and then last, last question, Madam Chair. Dr. Rutledge has been here many times over the last two years, so, and I appreciate her continued comments, and we are working out as quickly as probably we should be on process. But I did notice that staff recommendation number four dealt with historical and archaeological resource assessments. Is, would, would some of the things that Ms. Rutledge spoke about, would that fall under that condition? Or are you specifically speaking about specific on the site?
Madam Chair, that, that policy is specifically referring to any historical or archaeological features on the site. So that's typically done by a consultant that comes and actually, you know, verifies it through testing throughout the property.
Okay, and with regards to solar, that, I mean, by right, they have that ability right now, whether it's in or out of this plan. Is that correct?
Yeah, I was just going to see if anyone wanted to elaborate more, but that, the answer is yes.
Okay, so again, that speaks to the necessity to, as we move forward, if we, if we get to a special area plan moving forward, the real need to collaborate with both the staff and the community. Thank you, Madam Chair. That's it for now. And thank you all for tonight.
Commissioner Pritzi. Thank you, Madam Chair. Thanks to everybody for being here tonight, and to the landowner for taking the time to be here and to hear our community and their concerns. I really appreciate that. I know it's a lot of time to ask of everybody. I have a few questions for staff and possibly some for the applicant. I believe this question probably is most addressed by Mr. Hofstadter. In our report, I didn't write down my pages, I'm sorry, I'm terrible. I have so many little flags here that you would probably be crazy, drive you crazy if I asked all my questions, so. In, in a part of the report, it quote, "Site remains the same. Not much has changed since the KBN report." And so I guess one of my big questions is, if not much has changed, I did see the differences in some of the land management decisions, but quality of the, of the land consideration is not part of the consideration of strategic ecosystems. So I wondered why a reduction from the two thousand two hundred and seventy-nine acres of strategic ecosystem to the current recommendation of one thousand four hundred and ninety acres?
Okay, Madam Chair, yeah. So you're right, you, you wouldn't disqualify habitat that's been modified or managed in a way that's losing quality. So we retained those areas. The areas that we removed were, were those areas that lost their habitat through the transition to a, a dense pine plantation. So those were the areas that were mainly excluded and taken out of the strategic ecosystem boundaries, which would have, you know, we would have had a smaller area of that back in nineteen ninety-six. But that's consistent with, with the suggestions in, in, in the regulations for strategic ecosystems. So the habitat, if they've lost their habitat, they, they were removed from those areas.
In the report, it states something to this effect of that areas that had been cleared of pine plantation were rebounding and restoring, and I'm guessing that's from the native seed bed that was there. Is it, is it presumable that if the pine plantations cleared in the northern portion, were cleared in the northern portion, that we might have similar rebound?
Madam Chair, that's a good question. I, there is a possibility. I would, I would always say that nature always rebounds, you know, if you, if you give her a chance. So, you know, it all comes down to how much soil impact has occurred to create and put in those beds. And, and you can sometimes tell based on the ground cover that retained and how much effort is being put into, to maintenance of those pine areas. If the soil stays intact and there's not a lot of impacts, then yes, I do think there's always a possibility that it could rebound. But again, it's going to come down to soils.
And do we have that data available to look at those soils?
We do have soil data that was provided. Again, that soil data is not going to change. It really comes down to getting onto the property and, and kind of investigating. And from what we thought, those dense pine plantations, although they have retained some tortoises, had very little understory conditions at this time.
Okay. So the statement then, "At a minimum designate areas in Figure one as conservation management area." That's the, the figure that you all drew that looks something like this, but it has some salmon areas on it. What other areas would you recommend also be considered or explored further for consideration if we were not going to at a minimum protect that area? I mean, so I guess the, the sort of at a minimum sort of begs the question of what are the other areas that might or should be considered? Would we not know that? Would it take more data and analysis?
Madam Chair, it may take another, you know, kind of collaborative effort with the applicant. The minimum area designated was what the, the study is currently stating as what's necessary to protect the integrity of the strategic ecosystem, and that's the goal of what the study is supposed to do. So there could be additional area that could be set aside in design strategies for other aspects that would retain protection of habitat areas that have a lower priority, as well as potentially providing protection to those other geologic features in some of those areas. I don't know if that completely answered your question, but that, that's somewhat why we have those areas designated as salmon, that, you know, that there would be design strategies to retain what we could there through clustering policies.
In your recommendations that you provided to us in the staff report, can you pull those up really quick, or can you put them up really quick? I, number three, I'm just wondering how the first and second parts of, of, of number three differ. You, you talk about, I've read all of them, subsection four oh six, you know, parts B, part one and two, and it, you know, it sort of states that we have to do development in a way that protects the ecosystems essentially. And then you say, "Or alternatively, any proposed development would follow our Rural Ag Cluster Development Standards." Would those not be one in the same?
Madam Chair, you're, you're actually right. Madam Chair, you're, you're actually right. The word alternatively, probably not the right word. The initial policy of 406031 and 2 is a simple statement. You shall, you know, meet rural ag cluster policies. Or develop at the lowest zoning that you are, level that you're currently zoned for. So if we happen to be in another part of the county that had a different higher intensity already zoned, then you would have to meet the minimum, but that's not the scenario here. So the scenario here is that you have to follow rural ag cluster policies. And policies 629 through 6213 are those policies that explain how you accomplish that.
Okay, and would you, would you think that that, that those standards would have enough protections for the strategic area development standard? Or do you think that there may be additional requirements necessary to protect the ecosystem and geologic features in those areas in addition to our rural ag cluster development standards?
Madam Chair, so it, I think it does address the clustering strategies and it would prioritize, you know, how and what you, you would protect through those clustering, so that, that is in place. I think what we try to capture the additional issues and the other conditions, which is, you know, dealing with fertilizer, dealing with, with water quality concerns, dealing with stormwater issues that could create additional concerns for those features. So I think we're addressing those additional concerns in conditions 6, 7, and 8.
Okay, sorry, I've just got a few more. In part 5F, those are, you talk about, "Development shall be served by centralized potable water and sanitary sewers in order to minimize proliferation of individual wells and septic systems," period. Then you say, "Any proposed extension of centralized potable water and sanitary sewer infrastructure that is proposed should follow the application and address these policies in our comprehensive plan." Those, are those two separate statements? Are you saying that all development, developed areas in this plan regardless should be served by sanitary sewer and water, potable water, period? Or are you saying if they are, if that's the proposal in the upcoming plan from the applicant, that they should address the issues and policies?
Madam Chair, I believe the recommendation is that if, if the applicant goes forward with the master planning scenario, since that is, since that does include urban-type land uses densities and intensities, that those areas should be served by centralized potable water and sanitary sewer services. At the same time, we do have policies 3.1.5 and 3.1.6, which talk about how water and sewer lines can be extended outside the urban cluster. There's a specific methodology and specific factors that have to be considered. So we want to make sure that when the subsequent special area plan comes forward, that those will be addressed.
So we could ostensibly look at those policies and look at the potential health and safety issues related to the sewer, I mean, related to the wells and septic systems in this area, and still collaboratively plan water and wastewater facilities to this property in any development scenario? Potentially, okay.
Madam Chair, yes, the, yeah, the policies 3.1.5 and 3.1.6, I mean, they're, they're kind of independent of the urban cluster policies, although they are related. So those could be analyzed and potentially used as a basis for extending water and sewer services outside of the urban cluster under any potential development scenario.
And several of the, the folks that came up and spoke today expressed concerns about the management of these, of the conservation management areas and of the ecosystem integrity. Can you speak to the, sort of what would be required in terms of management and, and monitoring for these conservation management areas?
Sorry, Madam Chair, Steve Hofstadter again. If I have to read something, I have to have my glasses. Yeah, so the, the Upland Pine Habitat, which is kind of the large area to the west, that clearly needs, ideally, under the best management practices, prescribed burning. Now, you can offset prescribed burning with some other mechanical work to get it to a condition in which you can burn well. But that would be the primary target in, because it is, it's a habitat that requires you to retain burning on a regular cycle or it transitions to a different type of habitat, which is, turns into more of a hardwood habitat. So if you want to retain pines as a dominant species and a type of understory that responds well to fires, then you have to continually burn it on a regular basis. And talking with, like, our land staff, we would do, you know, small patches on what we call a rotational basis. And, you know, every few years, you would burn areas out in different locations. But that allows the, that, the species that rely on that to respond and germinate and continue to not get outcompete by species that will take over if you weren't to burn. So on the west side, that would, you know, burning it and that kind of strategy would be the number one. On the other side, you could let that habitat kind of continue to develop and mature, and that's the area on the sinkholes. So you would want a nice dense canopy of the oaks that are around those sinkholes, but you could allow that area to continue. And really, what you're doing there is invasive, non-native plant control. So you're going in there, removing the invasives that if left on, if not taken care of, then, then they would take over and start to, you know, cause harm to, to that habitat. So one side is really about management of exotics. The other side is a much more intensive management strategy to retain the natural scenarios that you would get with lightning strikes and things like that.
Thank you. I have, I did, I did wonder, I mean, we have had a lot of people today, you know, express the desire to protect and conserve this property. And I think I really applaud staff for working hard to try to identify all of the ways that we might, I might be able to protect and conserve this property using our comprehensive plan. There's been sort of some ideas thrown out there about purchasing the property. I know that that was attempted in the past. It was scored for our, for acquisition and there were some acquisition efforts made, but I guess the, the time wasn't right and the funding wasn't necessarily there to be able to do that. Seems like the funding strategies maybe have changed out there. There's a lot more money flowing down from the feds, at least I've heard that. Do you think there is funding opportunities out there that might allow for the purchase of a property if the landowner was willing to buy the property, I mean, even to sell portions of the property? Is that, do you think there's funding mechanisms out there to do that right now or no?
Madam Chair, I believe there is, you know, at the federal level and at the state level, there, there is a lot more for residency and protection of habitat. And we still have a lot of the, the same funding opportunities, like the Florida Forever funding and so on. The property is currently designated as a cost share, which means that we can only purchase up to 50%, and we'd have to get funds from the other 50%. So that would be something we'd have to inquire about now. As, you know, I'm sure the property owner can attest, we haven't, we, we looked into that in 2017 and we, we made an effort and we were trying to find a partner. We weren't able to find a partner at that time.
Thank you. I have, I have another question for the applicant, if they could. The mixed-use village suggestion as a new future land use category gave no specifics as to the land uses within the classification in terms of density or intensity or limits to uses in that designation. Can you clarify what you anticipated with this concept of a mixed-use village? You sort of, you reference other developments in the area. I mean, that could be Oakmont, that could be Town of Tioga, that could be Hale Plantation. I guess I just don't, it's hard to sort of anticipate what the, what the conversation, what sort of was envisioned with the idea of a mixed-use village specifically?
Thank you, Madam Chair, Chair Dedenbach. What's really envisioned there is things that kind of embody your principles of your traditional neighborhood development and transit-oriented development. And so it's kind of difficult to say exactly what it would be, but when we talked about it in there, we would look at having densities that would range from four probably up to, you know, 18, 20 dwelling units an acre. By example, I would say spatially, since we've never honestly drawn a plan for this land, you know, in locating adjacent to the existing elementary school at Oakmont and across from, you know, the potential future high school, placing higher density there where you might have town homes or a multifamily-type unit closer in proximity so that new teacher, that new custodian, that new, you know, administrator might live in more of a town home-type environment. That's the kind of densities we were talking about. Now, the range of uses, Madam Chair, would certainly be, you know, residential, workforce housing, service-type uses, retail and professional uses in there. We wouldn't consider any uses that were, you know, toward the other end of the spectrum that would be like light industrial manufacturing. While there could be research, you know, in an office professional environment, the uses would be very synonymous with, like, what happens in Hale Village Center, by example, or what happens in the Town of Tioga. And as you enter into those core areas there, you can see that, you know, residential over retail is greatly conserving external space. Does that answer the question, Madam Chair, to Commissioner Prisia?
Yeah, I think so, thank you. I appreciate that. I think I'll conclude for now. Thank you. Thank you. Commissioner?
I, I just have, I guess, some basic questions that I heard some of the citizens talk about. And one was the karst areas. And they made reference to the city of Alachua with the karst areas. Remember, and it was denied. And so is this an issue with this property, with the karst areas?
Madam Chair, yeah, so karst features, especially in this situation, we've got some caves and sinkholes. There was a cave in the city of Alachua. That feature, we were able to determine, under the surface, did flow to areas that we had concerns with and we had conditions put in place for development to, to help limit the impacts to, to that feature. With this one, we do know there's a cave. It has, you know, historically, three aquatic shrimp species that have been identified in that property. It's known to have a bat colony associated with it. And we, we would be concerned with, with what type of cage systems would be there. And that would be part of an analysis moving forward to at least know where the cage systems are. I'm not suggesting we could map that out completely, but you could do ground penetrating radar and things like that could help address those concerns if developed is, is proposed on, in close proximity to those features.
Okay, and I also, in the report, it talked about the tortoises and the gopher tortoises. And it also talked about if you relocate them, they could get an upper respiratory condition that will normally be fatal to the population. Is that an issue if we're talking about concentrating them on one particular area?
Madam Chair, it, it is. The upper respiratory disease that affects tortoises can be fatal and there's no known cure for that. And, and they're at a higher risk when you, higher, in higher densities. You know, just like we, you know, if you're in close proximity, you tend to spread that, that flu around.
He's also talked about stress too.
It puts stress on tortoises. The success rate is, it can be difficult. The further you move a tortoise from its existing location, they want to make their way back to those burrows. So you have to pin them in unfortunately, to, to teach them to relocate it. I'm, I'm not a supporter of relocation in general. If, if we can, you want to preserve them on site. So, you know, that'll be part of the analysis. You know, we won't allow a density beyond what's, you know, is healthy for the, those animals. So that may require additional expansion under state rules. But, you know, I, yeah, there's always a concern when you relocate tortoises.
And I think Ken addressed the issue about the historical stuff and you, and I think you stated that that was just for that particular property, right? And so I think that there was one more I had. I mean, there was a lot of question about the aquifer and that it was not, I'm trying to go off a membrane, not enough wetlands or something like that. But it protected, without the wetlands, it protected the water from pollution. Is that correct or I misread that?
Yes, so Madam, Madam Chair.
Wasn't enough wetlands? I thought that's what it said.
Yeah, we do have, we do have a small wetland feature that we are protecting and buffering. However, this part of the county, it, there is no protective barrier that wetlands often provide in the majority of this area. So any pollutants that would go down with stormwater, rainwater, would go directly into the aquifer. So there is a concern and so we, you know, with any development, you want to address those and identify what those pollutants could be and then try to find ways to minimize getting those pollutants down into the aquifer. So our stormwater systems should be designed to help treat that, as well as other criteria that will hopefully eliminate ways in which those pollutants get down. So like, we have conditions on containment of materials, like fertilizers. You'd have to properly contain them, things like that. Now, obviously, once you apply them, you got to apply them in a way that hopefully that reduces that impact. But, yeah, that, this is an area of the county where, once it gets on the surface, it's going to go down with the water in most situations and potentially cause harm.
Okay, so the, basically, the special aerial study is just the ground truth and get the species and all of that stuff that's on the site and all of those areas we've talked about just recently and the questions that have been asked. So are we premature in asking these questions until we move to the next phase? I, I'm just asking because I don't quite remember that with Plum Creek, but anyway, so. This is something new, I think. It's not like the Plum Creek situation, so.
Madam Chair, that, you bring up a good point about when to bring forward certain items. So with the study, what we, the main part is to identify what needs to be protected based on what we see on the site. And that's what the study is doing, as well as staff's recommendation for setting aside these areas that represent the strategic ecosystem areas that should be protected. The, the other aspects, I think we're trying to address in conditions that will move forward as we develop wherever we go, whether it, whatever type of development is proposed or not proposed. We're trying to lay those conditions out to, to make sure we're, we're protecting those resources we need to protect. So it is a little different than Plum Creek, but, but in some ways it's similar in the fact that we, we are making sure we're protecting those areas that should be protected. And, and the one reason Plum Creek was denied was that they wanted significant amount of wetland impacts and that was beyond what, what the board was willing to support. So that's something similar. We want to make sure we're, we're, we're protecting what we feel is, the comp plan and the code says we should be protecting.
So if we move to the next phase, all of these things will be kind of addressed and talked about or worked out? And then it comes back to us, sort of like the Plum Creek thing?
So, yeah, so.
Yeah, I guess, or the.
Yeah, Madam Chair, the next step is that special area plan and that's where those details get worked out. So we're not moving directly to a development plan. We've got that special area plan process, we'll, it'll address those issues in the next step.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Ekel, land, do you have?
I thank staff and I thank the applicant for the education today. I think that what the community is going to get here in Alachua County is one of the most stringent development processes in the state. I actually live in this area, in District 1, in Hale Plantation, off of Hale Plantation Boulevard, right in the area where one of the potential road expansions will go. So I'm definitely paying attention. This is going to impact me, but I trust this process. So thank you all for being here.
Thank you, thank you. I, I was going to have a concluding thing. I don't really have anything to, if so, if you have more questions.
One more question first. With regards to the request, the question about sort of rebound possibilities, soils, you know, you were just talking about the sort of, do we have the raw data to be able to analyze that now? Or would we need to do additional data, or would the applicant need to do additional, additional data collection to figure that out? And then, I guess, if we don't have that data now, is it important? How does that get done? Does that get done as a part of the special area study process? Or can we add that as a condition of any development or any movement forward in the special area planning process? How would that work?
Madam Chair, that's a tough question. Traditionally, we've, we've taken out that intensive pine plantation areas within our designation of strategic ecosystems. designation of strategic ecosystems. So, I mean, that's something we can discuss with the applicant. You know, I'm not sure how we would proceed in another way, they've provided the soils, they've identified that site as dense pine plantation. So, the suggestion at this point was that would be the area more highly recommended for development. Again, reminding people that you can only, you know, you can only potentially protect up to 50% of the property towards strategic ecosystem. So, you know, I'm not sure how to proceed there, I...
I guess my question, though, is it's sort of to that 50%, right? This is a 4,068-acre property, half, 50% would be 2,000 some odd acres. That's approximately what is currently identified as strategic ecosystem. Now, with, with what's been ground truth to date, it's half of that again, almost, not quite, right? So, it's now a quarter of the property, it's not a full 50% of the property. Now, I recognize that there will also be, hopefully, some really great, especially with IFIS at the helm, there'll be some really great opportunities to do some agricultural areas, there'll be some opportunities to do some good open space conservation area management in addition to the protected CMAs. But, I guess, my question is just that as we start to shrink that conservation manage, or that, that strategic ecosystem, I just want to be absolutely sure that we have the data and analysis to conclude that we know that that isn't strategic ecosystem. You know, I see that there's at least one significant geologic feature up in that area, there are still some gopher tortoise burrows in that area, so there's still some, some sort of remnants of what was the original ecosystem, and I understand it's been under intensive pine plantation, and that's definitely not strategic ecosystem, but per the aerials, it was once upon a time. And so, I guess I just want to make sure before we sort of dive into, you know, that's the developable area that we know that we're protecting the, what could be there and sort of, you know, making, and what is there, and making sure that we're making wise decisions about that development. So, I just wanted to know what sort of would be the best-case scenario in terms of having the data, and if we already do, then that's great, to be able to make those decisions as we move forward with development in that area.
Madam Chair, will we view the data with the applicant? I think the data is there suggesting that this is probably the better area for development, but we can have that discussion. We'll make an effort to have that, you know, maybe hopefully prior to the next meeting, too, so at least we can respond to you on that.
And last, you did in your application, or in your report, mention that, and actually there, they mentioned it as well, their, I think it was ECT possibly that did some of the geological work, mentioned that ground penetrating radar and site-specific data for the areas containing those sand pits and some of the geological features would be important to understand, from my, from my understanding, the overall stability and connectivity of the geologic features. Is that something that's been conducted?
Madam Chair, it has not, and, and, yeah, both the, the ECT did recommend we look into that, so that would be something that would be done if and when there's development proposed in those areas. And ground penetrating radar, I'm sure Jerry could probably comment on this, we do that frequently for developments in these areas. I know we did it for Oakmont, we've done it for several others, so we will look into that, and that usually is done prior to development coming forward.
Okay, great, thank you.
Yes, of course.
Real quick, Madam Chair, thank you. I want to thank the Lees for being here tonight, and you have for being here tonight. Would it be possible for us to get copies of the presentations tonight so that we could put them on the site? There's obviously a lot of public, I hear, I see Jerry saying yes, and I see Dr. Lane, so thank you, so that the public can have access to those. Lot of good information presented tonight, and I guess the last question I'll have is for, really for Steve, so, yeah, you're here on the seat tonight. So, number of conditions were presented. I was going to wait to ask this question till October 11th, but I figured since we're all here, I might as well ask it. Has, has the applicant signed off on those conditions, or have they, have they had a chance to look at those? No, they have not.
Madam Chair, no. They've, you know, they're seeing it when we submitted our staff report a week or two ago, that's when they saw those final conditions.
Okay, any interest in talking about that at the workshop, or wait until the 11th? Wait until the 11th, okay. Madam Chair, thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, if I might just...
Of course.
Because Commissioner Cornell brought that up, and Commissioner Chestnut did as well. The conditions that we placed on here are not being preemptive in most cases. I mean, they are, they're saying, "Think about this when you move forward," but it's all stuff that the applicant, some of the environmental isn't, but the applicant brought up in their original submittal, especially with the land use issues and things like that, that we're saying, you know, if there's more density, because we know that's where it may be headed. So, I just wanted to make that point. Now, some of the land use conditions are just because things were not in the study or in their report that we thought needed to be brought to your attention as we move forward.
Okay, thank you.
Well, I just, I just want to thank Dr. Lane and Dr. Engel for coming tonight, and Susan Crowley. I want this board...
Ms. Dixon?
Yes, okay, well, these, these folks I didn't get to see talk up here, so, you know, and those are the folks that I'm thanking, particularly Dr. Lane and Susan Crowley, who have worked with me in the last four years of trying to build better relationships and partnerships, which I heard you all say a lot tonight, and I really do appreciate that, and that you came here tonight to, to share your thoughts and ideas about it. And also, I would like to thank Mr. Lee, and I want to make sure everybody knows that four years ago, when I first came on this board, I rode that farm with you in a truck. I think it was you, was it? It was you, that's what I was thinking, it was you, and saw how much you loved that place, and it's stuck in my head, and I got to tell you in the last year that I knew that this was coming forward, or at least the last six to eight months, I know, that I have been trying to flush out that partner to help the county buy this property from you, because I know that that's where you really wanted it to go. You wanted it to come to us, or you wouldn't have gone to all the trouble to put it on the list. And that's what people need to know, it's been on that list, I know, since I've been here, and, and we weren't able to find the partner that we needed to purchase it. And so, maybe now, you know, the situation has changed, that there are enough people, here, now we've got folks who are interested, I felt like Chicken Little for a while, you know, the sky's falling, Scott, we need to do something here. And, and believe me, I've been working to try to find that partner out there so that we had an alternate plan. So, I'm really glad to see that all of you came out right here, even if it's the 11th hour, you know, to, to give your support to a family who would like very much at one time. Now, I don't know where they stand now, of course, you know, we're moving forward because we weren't able to get any motion, and I understand that, because we're all getting older, you know, we need to make plans, I realize, I realize, and it was four of mine because I got to ride that property with you, and I was glad to see it. But, any case, I just want the community to know that you, you made the effort to put that out years ago.
And the state did want it.
And, and we haven't been, and I've, I've been to the big people, too, you know, saying, "This is big properties here, you know, guys, come on." And so, now, all of a sudden, people are interested, so maybe this is, you know, maybe this is the time. But, any case.
Madam Chair.
This boys, and thank you so much for being here tonight.
Oh, it's my pleasure to be here and answer all the questions, I appreciate all the public input. I apologize, it took me a little longer to get up here than it should have, but I'd like to respond to the question about conditions, just so the public knows and you know. I think generally speaking, as it relates to the growth management department, the planning staff's conditions, we're generally in accord. We know we have some more homework to do on the urban cluster line policies, we understand that, we're, we're quite happy to do that. I think where we're, it appears that we're pretty far apart, are those that are related to the environmental protection conditions, and frankly, some of them were very surprising, given the close collaboration that we've had with staff for the past two years or so. So, I think a couple of those are, there's one that ironically, we go through this elaborate process, and we come out the back end with what we have now, rural ag clustering. So, who would do that? So, I just pose that as a general question, common sense question. So, the reason to do all of this is to provide all of the amenities that we've suggested are possible with master planning, but you need urban density to pay for all of that. So, I'll leave you with that thought.
Thank you.
And, and we will, of course, you know, get with staff and continue to work on those between now and the 11th.
Yes.
Okay?
Thank you, yes, to be continued. All right. Commissioners, do you have anything else? And we need to, I think that we have outlined a public comment, too, at the end of all of this, is that on our, one final public comment? Is that on our agenda?
Not on, it's not on the agenda.
Right, not on the agenda, that's right, all right, then. So, if there's anyone who has energy left to come to the mic and share whatever they'd like to, about anything that's not on the agenda, which was this presentation. Well, all right, then, seeing none, commissioners, we are adjourned. Thank you all so much for everyone coming.